Good afternoon, everyone. Let's go ahead and call this Pompano Beach City Commission meeting to order October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. If I could ask everyone to please silence their cell phones or put them on vibrate during the meeting, that would be great, so we don't get disrupted. So please put your cell phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fournier.
Here.
Mayor Harden.
Here. Thank you. Our invocation this afternoon will be given by Pastor Dr. Gary Kolbach from Grace Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge. Pastor?
Thank you again for the honor of starting the meeting this way. Let's pray together. Father, I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you for the privilege of being in a group of people, among a group of people, that desire to have your wisdom, your guidance in this meeting. Lord, I want to pray for our mayor, specifically today, that you'll give him just divine wisdom. For each council member today, we thank you for the position that they represent, the people that they represent. Again, we just pray that all that's done would be done in a way that would honor you, in a way that would be best for the city. We thank you for our city, a privileged place to live. What an opportunity that we have. And Lord, I just pray that you'd continue to bless the city. Grant your just grace among us. For our country, again, we look around the world and we see what's taking place, and we just have to stop and say thank you, that you placed us in a place such as this. So today, we just come before you and we ask for divine wisdom. We ask for your blessing. We ask that this meeting would be conducted in a way that would honor you, that would be a great testimony for those that are watching of the way that people do business. And we just pray that in all that's said, all that's done, it would represent you well and represent the people of this city. We pray all that in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion approving the regular city commission meeting minutes of September ninth, two thousand twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. How about a motion approving the special city commission meeting minutes of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, first budget hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next, can I get a motion approving the special city commission meeting minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, our second budget hearing?
Mayor, I noticed a couple, just a thing, there were corrections.
Certainly, absolutely. On which one?
On the twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Very good.
So on the September twenty-second curve in, in the minutes after Mr. Skversky's comments, it's notes that Mayor Harden called something disrespectful, and it was actually Commissioner Sigerson Eaton. So I just want to make sure that that was corrected for the record. And then I know, I just would like to make sure that both the September twenty-second and the twenty-third, just to kill it in one, in one go, would both be amended to clearly state Commissioner Sigerson Eaton's comments regarding her, her absence as well, verbatim, as she stated it on the record.
Okay.
And I can send that to you in an email. Thank you.
So should we table that, Mayor, since I haven't seen what the changes?
Yeah, so that's the September twenty, yeah, can, let's go ahead and we'll bring, yeah, the twenty-second we'll bring back at a future, future meeting, once you have a chance to look at the corrections. Mr. Alfred, now, is that, Commissioner Fezick, is that also, has that changed to the twenty-second, to the twenty-third also?
Right, the twenty-second and twenty-third, just to basically state verbatim what the, what the reason for extra, just verbatim what it was.
Sure, okay. So we'll, we'll go ahead and bring that one back at our next meeting also. So those two, we bring back in the future, once the corrections are made or noted that what, what's going on. Very good. Can I get a motion approving the special city commission meeting minutes of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Very good. All right. Again, let's see, approval of the agenda. I know tonight, we are, this afternoon, we're striking item number five, and item number twelve is postponed until the November thirteenth meeting. So five is gone completely, and item twelve is postponed until November thirteenth. Mr. Donovan, any further changes to our agenda?
Yes, Mayor, actually, we do. We have a special proclamation that will be placed on the dais here for you to read.
Okay, very good. We'll have that, yeah. Okay, we'll have that, yeah, I guess, do that right before the special presentation? Okay. Very good. We'll be adding a proclamation before the special presentation. All right. Can I get a motion approving the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. On our consent agenda this afternoon, we will be pulling items two and three for individual discussion. So two and three going to be individually discussed. So one and four are eligible for discussion during audience to be heard. All right. That takes us up to a proclamation. I'm not sure, let's see. Let me go over to the dais over there. All right. Let's see, let's see, let's see what we got. Oh, I see. Got it. Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Donovan. At this time, I'd like to request that our city attorney, Mr. Mark Berman, join me over here. That's, that's, that's an order. Mr. Berman has been with us for a great length of time. Been a mo- (laughing) Thank you. I've got a proclamation here. All right. Whereas, on September fifth, nineteen ninety-five, a day nearly eleven thousand days ago, the then-city attorney Gordon Lynn presented a resolution to then-mayor Emileu Olson, Vice Mayor George H. Melcher, and Commissioners William F. Griffin, E. Pat Larkins, and Herb Skolnick, requesting the appointment of Mark Emanuel Berman as an Assistant City Attorney. And whereas, over the next one hundred and seventy-five thousand hours, Mark E. Berman dedicated himself to faithfully serve the officials and residents of the great city of Pompano Beach as an Assistant City Attorney. Representing various boards, including the Zoning Board of Appeals and Nuisance Abatement Board, he successfully litigated one of the city's notorious spectacles, Club Cinema, which resulted in the venue's closure. Whereas, his journey continued, providing wise counsel and sound legal guidance, and like Charlie in Willy Wonka's Chocolate Factory, he received a golden ticket and accepted the appointment as a city attorney in two thousand fifteen. Congratulations. Whereas, in his role as the chief legal advisor for the city, we have all heard during most city commission meetings over the years, the melodious tones and pitches as he read each ordinance or resolution titles fashioned by his office. Mark is known for providing a bit of humor, as well as straight talk, to ease or simplify the serious consideration, whether a complex legal matter, significant projects, or decision that will dramatically shape the community. And whereas, Mark has consistently demonstrated professionalism, fairness, and a commitment to hone his craft as a government lawyer, eminent in his attaining board certification with the Florida Bar's City-County Local Government Law Section, a certification held by few. His recent recognition as a recipient, recipient of the Paul S. Buckman Award for his outstanding contribution in the area of legal public service, his service on the Executive Council of the City-County Local Government Law Section, and recipient of the Section Chair's Service Award. And whereas, Mark has endeared himself to friends, colleagues, and residents alike, all recognizing his genuine love of life and of people, and tireless commitment to justice and ethical governance. And whereas, he has been more than just a city attorney. He has been a trusted confidant, colleague, mentor, and friend, and leaves an indelible mark on City Hall and the broader community. And whereas, Mark's thirty years of service and commitments were made possible through the loving support and encouragement of his wife of forty-one years, Wendy, and their two beautiful children, Stephanie and Evan, and will be the topic of many bedtime stories told by Grandpa Mark to his soon-to-arrive grandchild in the upcoming year. And whereas, the mayor and city commission wish, wish to express their deepest gratitude for Mark's dedication, loyalty, and extraordinary contributions to the city of Pompano Beach. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city commission of the city of Pompano Beach on this fourteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-five, do recognize, honor, and commend Mark E. Berman for thirty years of outstanding service, and extend sincere appreciation and gratitude for his lasting impact on the city and its citizens, and heartfelt congratulations on this milestone achievement on this fourteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-five. Rex Harden, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berman. Thank you. Thank you.
This time you really got me. In any event, I'm, I'm just glad I decided to shave this morning. (laughing) In any event, thank you. It's been a pleasure, it's still a pleasure working with dedicated staff, elected officials, Mayor, and everyone here. It's been a joy coming to work all this time. It doesn't seem like work at times. It's been a pleasure. I hope it continues in this business. You're only good as your last advice, so, you know, I better hide that from you. But we're going to start up again in about two minutes, and the fun will continue. But thank you so much for your appreciation. Thank you for this un, very unexpected honor, and I appreciate your kind words and your applause as well. Thank you.
No, every thirty years.
All right, that takes us up to a special presentation. Residential Workforce Housing. Armando Arana, Coordinator, Government Affairs, Office of Legislative Affairs, Broward County Public Schools, to present Resolution Number twenty-six dash one fourteen, which stipulates the School Board of Broward County, Florida, supports the development of residential workforce housing units on the two-point-eight-four-eight-five-acre Dave Thomas East Education Center site, and to make one hundred percent of the housing units available for qualified Broward County Public School employees. Very good. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's, like the mayor said, Armando Arana, Coordinator of Governmental Affairs of Broward County Public Schools. I'm joined by Ms. Rachel Daly, also from our Department of...
Facility Planning and Real Estate.
That's it. Good.
I was mixed, mixed.
It happens to me, too.
So, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I'll say legendary now, City Attorney, right? And City Manager. Thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity. First of all, we bring greetings from our Superintendent, Dr. Howard Hepburn, and all of our, all of our Broward County Public Schools families. I'm here to introduce Ms. Daly, who will present with you the proposed site development of Dave, Dave Thomas East Education Center for a very special project. Thank you so much.
Good.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is special to me, because I'm from Pompano Beach, so born and raised, so this is personal, too. So I'm going to present the resolution for the proposed site development of Dave Thomas East Education Center, Resolution Number twenty-six dash one-one-four. Whereas, the School Board of Broward County, Florida, SBBC, as the controlling, controlling body of the district schools of Broward County, Florida, owns, operates, and maintains various facilities and sites throughout Broward County, including elementary, middle, and high schools, vocational sites, training facilities, and equipment, and vacant land. And whereas, SBBC is the owner of a two-point-eight-four-eight-five-acre real property located at one-eighty Southwest Second Street, Pompano Beach, Florida, three-three-zero, three-three-zero-six-zero, also known as Dave Thomas East Education Center, hereafter referenced as center. And whereas, SBBC operated the center as an alternative educational facility from school years twenty-seventeen to twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, and whereby, in order to make repairs to the center, the students attending the center were relocated to another SBBC-owned facility. And whereas, in twenty-twenty-two, it was determined that the facility had extensive structural issues, and therefore, any further attempts to repair the facility would be economically unwise. Therefore, a custody was conducted on the facility, and the conclusions in the custody report recommended that the facility should be demolished. Subsequently, the custody report was submitted to the Florida Department of Education, FDOE, where it is, where it is currently pending the FDOE's review. And whereas, SBBC is the largest employer in Broward County and has a large workforce. However, housing in Broward County is increasingly becoming expensive and unaffordable, and is presumably impacting SBBC's ability to retain its workforce and affect new personnel, attract new personnel into its workforce. And whereas, SBBC decides to, desires to retain its workforce and attract new personnel in its workforce, as such, SBBC takes the position that it is prudent to redevelop the two-point-eight-four-eight-five-acre land occupied by the center as residential workforce housing units, and subsequently make them affordable to SBBC-qualified employees to reside in. And in furtherance of this position, SBBC publicly discussed this intent at the June tenth, twenty-twenty-five School Board Workshop. And whereas, in alignment with the information presented and discussed in the workshop, SBBC agrees that the residential workforce, workforce housing units developed on the site should be compatible with the surrounding residential developments, have a robust community ambiance, and with a balanced density to ensure its long-term sustainability. And whereas, SBBC hereby commits and directs that the residential workforce housing unit shall be developed via the implementation of a public-private partnership mechanism. And whereas, SBBC hereby commits to work cooperatively, cooperatively and collaboratively with the city of Pompano Beach to achieve SBBC's position stated herein in this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the School Board of Broward County, Florida, and as follows. Section one, the School Board hereby, hereby supports the development of residential workforce housing units on the two-point-eight-four-eight-five-acre Dave Thomas East Education Center site. Section two, the School Board hereby requires that one hundred percent of the residential workforce, workforce housing units should be available to occupy by qualified Broward County School Board employees. Section three, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption, adopted this nineteenth day of August, two thousand twenty-five. Deborah Hickson, Chair, School Board of Broward County, Florida, Dr. Howard Hepburn, Superintendent.
Very good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Look forward to the development. Look forward to partnering with the School Board and anything we need to do to make it happen. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
I wanted to say thank you also for coming here and bringing this, the resolution. We've, this has been a topic of conversation for a while. I know Mr. Donovan and I went down and met with Wanda Paul and Dr. Zeeman, and this has been quite a collabora, collaboration and a really good example of how to repurpose some of these sites and work with the city to come up with a framework and a plan that serves the community and the, the school, the School Board and the school employees. So, thank you so much, and I look forward to continuing in this process with you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I think this is a great project. I'm looking forward to it. Very needed in Pompano, and will this be the first residential project in Broward? Residential workforce housing.
Yes, it would be Broward County Public Schools' first initiative.
Wonderful.
Of many more that we hope to replicate in other cities.
Okay, great. So we have a residential workforce housing unit coming to Pompano Beach, right behind City Hall. Thank you.
That's correct.
Teachers only.
Teachers, not just teachers, School Board employees. We want to include our cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians, so School Board employees.
Okay, and how many units, again?
We haven't gotten there far yet, so we will work with the city, because we know you have a lot of development coming. We want to make sure that we tie into your development. So whatever designated staff that we need to sit down with to come up with the conceptual, that's how we're going to come up with the number of units.
Great. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to it.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Thank you for the initiative. Very good. All right. That takes us up to Audience to be Heard. Do we have anyone signed up for Audience to be Heard, Mr. Alfred?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have eleven speakers.
Very good.
First speaker, Robert Kitchin, followed by Mark Antigia, followed by Robert Goldbaum. Robert Kitchin?
Please come forward. Just give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Pastor?
Good afternoon. Robert Kitchin, six-seven-three Northwest Twentieth Court, Pompano Beach, Florida. I come to speak to you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, the Commissioners, concerning the professionalism and care of our city workers and staff. I would like to show my appreciation for what they do for the city and the effects they have on the infrastructure, the services, and keeping everything running smoothly, and ask that they be really appreciated, because we need them and we want them to know that we appreciate them. I got a real short story to tell. I was in Lowe's, and one of the city workers who happened to be in there, and I didn't know who he was at the time, saw me about to purchase something that would mess up my plumbing. He came along and he goes, "That'd mess up your plumbing." He showed me some items to purchase. I purchased them, and how about, they work a lot better than liquid plumbing and everything else. And I, I wanted him to know that I appreciate that, and I would come to tell him. Also, I would like to say that you all do a wonderful job up here, and I would like to see that continue, and, and, and to see the unity, to see the tone and everything of community, and, and put in place so that as citizens of Pompano, which I am, I've been all my life, I was born and raised here. I was born in nineteen fifty-three in Jones Quarters. Yeah. And only time I left was to do my career in the military. But we have a lot of people, a lot of young people that want to come back to Pompano. I like the initiative that's being done for the School Board. But we need those kind of things done for young professionals who wants to come back to Pompano and have single-family housing, single-family, but we're going to need this commissioner, this commission, to work together to make that happen. And so I would say to you all, God bless you. Keep the faith and work and unity. Be transparent, and keep Pompano as one of Florida's best-kept secrets.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker?
Mark Entragula, fourteen oh one South Ocean Boulevard. I want to basically address the proceedings as a resident views them on YouTube over the last several months, and I urge fellow residents to watch them live or in recording, because they are recorded. It seems to me, as an unbiased resident, that these proceedings tend to run a certain way. There are certain commissioners that ask questions, their questions are not answered, and then we get to a critical vote, and then our backs are up against the wall. You must vote in favor of this, or Armageddon will occur in the city of Pompano Beach. This has happened on more than one occasion. It happened when it came to the bond issue. It happened when it came to the CRA budget. And the CRA budget, by the way, which was a marathon, as you know, and it went over two days. The second day, council came in and told, spent another hour telling us all about the Armageddon that will happen if it wasn't passed, without giving a solution that would satisfy the commissioners that were asking questions. The city bureaucracy can mobilize to demolish a park, but it can't get projects in Commissioner Perkins's district accomplished over years. This is what we see when we look at these commission meetings. As far as other postings that go on online, I could tell you that people need to read things with a grain of salt, because there seems to be a number of residents here who sit at the ready to support every single decision that this city does, and every single dollar that this city spends without asking a question, and they always have a very detailed response. And my comments to other residents would be, please take a look at this, because unless they're being fed information from the lawyers, consultants, and other contractors that are making money from us, I don't know where they get their information. To urge fellow residents to get involved and to pay attention to what's going on here, and not just one meeting, because this is over the cost, course of months. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thanks for the time. I will attempt to be more cheerful than the last speaker. I'm a relatively new resident to Pompano Beach. Moved down here about a year ago. My job is a strategic consultant with Morgan Lewis Consulting. I spend my time spotting issues and helping to frame solutions to issues, and I would like to offer you guys some free money. We are squandering millions of dollars a year with forty and fifty car- We are squandering millions of dollars a year with forty and fifty cars sitting on Atlantic and sitting on Fourteenth Street Promenade while a couple of pleasure boats saunter through. It's not for emergency vehicles. It's not for construction. They're, they're opening for those boats. They're opening at separate times. Right now, on Fourteenth Street, I, I live at fifteen hundred, so I see this literally all day, every day. Um, they're opening twice an hour. So, instead of the guy with a yacht having to plan to be there on the hour, you have forty and fifty cars sitting there for eight, nine, sometimes ten minutes. So, the two things they need to do, um, in my judgment, just from the analytics we've done so far, are first, they should be opening once an hour on both Atlantic and on Fourteenth Street, and second, they have to tighten up how long they're open for. They're putting down the gates, a boat goes through, and a couple of minutes later, they're putting the gates back up, almost like they don't care that we've got deliveries, we've got construction, we've got people who are, um, just sitting there really fuming in their cars. I mean, if you went by the people who are sitting there, they're angry. And they're angry about the fact that it seems like their time's being just squandered. Now, I recognize that it's the Florida Department of Transportation that controls those bridges, but I have to figure that if the mayor's office is behind it, um, they would show us some flex. And so, Morgan Lewis Consulting would like to offer two things. We will do real analytics around it. Our estimate at the moment is that those two bridges are costing two or three million a year of people's time, but that's with incredibly conservative assumptions. Minimum wage being applied to the people, um, assuming fewer cars than we really think are, are sitting there. We would do some analytics, put together a report, and then if you deputize or empower us to do it, uh, we pro bono, we're not pitching you for business, we would go and talk to, uh, FDOT and see if we can get it changed. But we don't think we can get it changed unless the mayor's office is behind it.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind, um, providing your name and address for the record?
I did. I gave, uh, the clerk my card. Rob Goldbaum, Morgan Lewis, um, I'm at fifteen hundred North Ocean Boulevard.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Appreciate the offer also. Good point.
Happy to help.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker?
George Belengi, followed by Ed Phillips, followed by Mary Phillips.
Need taller chairs. Good day. My name's George Belengi, forty-one Havenwood Drive, Pompano Beach, Florida. Thanks for allowing me to speak again. Commissioner, thank you for taking the time, and you, Commissioner Eaton, before for coming to Community Court to check us out. I have stood before you previously pointing out an area of deficiency in the way we help those in crisis. In Community Court, we have people to resolve low-income housing. They typically have a two-plus-month wait for a unit to become available. If they have alcohol or drug addictions, are HIV/AIDS, or suffer mental illness, they can go straight to a program and shelter until their housing becomes available. However, and we are attending to single mothers with none of the above conditions and sending them to sleep on the streets or in their cars for that waiting period because they are not afflicted in any way. This has happened five times in the last two months. The focus of this series is to find help for non-addicts to get them off the streets in a timely fashion so they do not lose hope and become chronic homeless themselves. Can we reallocate our resources? Presently, the chronic homeless get most of the resources. Many of these people have no desire to help themselves and will forever be dependent on government monies. We have the crisis individuals who want to help themselves but cannot. With help, they will re-enter society. Most of them do. We need to rethink our shelter entry mechanisms. The present system mandates that a clean person who is trying to help themselves get out of homelessness develop an addiction or illness before they can get shelter. This promotes constant growth in the homeless population because with that added affliction comes a loss of hope, and people become complacent in the cycle. With this series of presentations, my goal is to garner support from some of you on the dais, community leaders, and from the agency workers who work on these issues daily. We should get together to unite and discuss thoughts and opinions. When these ideas are in harmony, and we believe we have the best possible ideas, we can then approach the County Commission. Please, let me be perfectly clear. The city of Pompano Beach itself can do little to help with this situation. With the homeless resources, all decisions and allocations of funds are made at county level. What we and the city can do is unite and present to Lamar Fisher and the County Commission. After all, they are our representatives. Who is willing to share their time and help me in this issue? In closing, I want to clarify. Please listen. I am not asking to take away any resources that chronic individuals need. I am asking that we review the resources and see what resources we are spending money on that are not being used and only reallocate that money. One more sentence. Once we are certain that we are good stewards of our resources, then we can analyze if extra monies are needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it. Next speaker?
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Ed Phillips. I currently reside at three-eighty-four Northwest Nineteenth Street, Pompano Beach, and I'm going a little fluently because there's a couple of things I want to address pretty quickly. Uh, first of all, Mayor, I do stay in Kendall Lakes, and there's a place called Porsche Dealership. And I don't know if they feel obligated to contact Kendall Lakes residents in any shape, form, or manner, but they're, and, and, and I think it's a good dealership. But I do think that somehow when they have, uh, when they're building fluidly in that area, that because they impact the neighborhood with the building and the cars coming through, that somehow we should know about it. Uh, I don't know there was a time when rezoning, and I don't know even know if they had to rezone that in any shape, form, or manner. But if they had, uh, someone on this desk knowing that that building was going on, they would have indicated to those folks, "Contact the neighborhood." Now, I'm reluctant to do this because I've seen for a couple of weeks that that was going on, and I said, "I'm not going to say anything. What's going on? I'm not going to say anything." But I think it behooves someone, some people at this level, to contact the neighborhood because it does impact the neighborhood, and at least let us know what's going on. Now, hold that thought. The next thing, let me say on the ally building entertainment, very, very, very good. Whoever's in charge of that, they're doing an outstanding job in ensuring that, uh, that building and the purpose of it is very fluent. So, thank you. Third thing, public safety. I did attend both of those, um, meetings, workshops, as you, as you may call them. Uh, I thought that, um, they were purposeful. Uh, they may not have had the number of people that folks would like to have seen there, but the discussion, the, the matter, the things that they discussed were worthwhile. I do think that this city does need to have a comparison when it comes to public works. I don't, in terms of the budget, I don't think we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater. If those folks who don't like Tony, Tony got nothing to do almost with these folks who normally run this operation. So, if we start talking about getting rid of BSO, let's make sure that it's not because we don't like Tony and how he proceeds and how he acts publicly. Let's ensure that it's because of the financial impact. And this is what I need to say. This Commission has to take in consideration the enormous amount of activity that we're doing right now financially. Can we sustain another financial impact on this budget and this residence by talking about having a public police department? If we have a, if we have the current police department that we have, let's look and see where we can cut or manage or decrease whatever services may need to be done at that time. But keep in mind that this city is growing.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Mary Phillips, three-eighty-four Northwest Nineteenth Street, Pompano Beach, Florida. Um, there's like three things that I'm, I'm concerned about. The first thing is the business tax receipt website. It is hard to maneuver. I go on it, it makes absolutely no sense. I have an issue that when the city has RFPs going out and they have my contact information, I'm a real estate broker, um, that they don't put out that to the people who actually are paying the tax receipt. We find out after the fact that you selected somebody to do a job that we have local people in this community that can do that same job. And I just think out of courtesy, the city of Pompano Beach should let everybody knows who's paying their tax receipt that they're looking for people to do certain things in the city. And if you could please look into revamping that site, because you can't hardly find anything, you have the right to go through it and try to fiddle through it to find out what's there. Not only that, if you redo that site, local people can probably do business with people in this community. So, that's one, one situation that I think needs to improve. We're spending a lot of money. Let's spend more money on communications and helping our local small businesses make money, okay? So, that's one thing. The other thing I have a problem with is this. Um, the city focuses primarily on their website on city events. It used to be when there was a public event and somebody paid their fifty-dollar public event, um, fee, that the city would allow that person or that individual to post their information on the city's website. That went away. I do not understand why, because whenever somebody books the facility, they're paying liability insurance. So, that should not be an issue. And I would like to see the city now again start allowing these nonprofits and other organizations to post their information. We have five and six book sales going on, book, oh, bookbag giveaways going on, going on in our community at the same time. And there's a lot of other events happening at the same time. It's because there's a lack of communication. These resources are here to help people. Whenever we do events, a lot of nonprofits, it helps people in this community. And if the city will once again start allowing these activities to be posted on their website so that the entire community could see them, I would really appreciate that, okay? And then for my last thing, um, we're going to be doing our Community Health and Wellness Fest, and thank you, city, for participating and supporting us over the years. It's going to happen again on November the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Um, we, the, the proposed site is going to be the Epat Larkin Center, unless BSO, which we are partnered with, as well as New Beginnings Worship Center, unless they decide to change it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Good, good points.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
I just want to address one of the points that Ms. Phillips made that we've talked about over and over up here, and it's her point about the calendar and events. Uh, I, I share her frustrations. We attend these events, and oftentimes they're not well-attended because there's multiple things going on at a time. So, but we know there's a need in the community, so it strikes me that there's some disconnect, right? If there's a need out there and there's all these giveaways and health fairs and events, but no one's attending them, the disconnect, I think, is communication. And I think we, as a city, need to do a better job of facilitating that communication uh, to the community about other events that are out there, um, from, there are the Broward Health Events that they're doing here to the health fairs. You're right about backpack giveaways. I get, we get invited to them, and there's six of them a weekend. So, there's a lot of good happening out there, but it's not necessarily reaching the people that need it. So, we need to do a better job, and I think the city does have a role in that. So, hopefully we can come together. I know I've heard Commissioner Perkins talk about this before too, and do a little better. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker?
Sabrina Lassane, followed by Roger Phillips, followed by Wayne Oaken.
Um, I'm here to, uh, propose that residents get a chance to let y'all know what a historical site is, because it seems like y'all are the only ones that get to mark things as historical. Um, in nineteen thirty-five, based on this woman's word, Margaret McDougall, father WD McDougall, a black man named Reuben Stacy asked her for, for a drink of water and was looking for work. She began to scream and contacted her father, which was a sheriff. McDougall put out an all-points bulletin that encouraged law enforcement in Dade and Broward Counties to be on the lookout for him. Reuben ran down Dixie Highway to Albert Semple House. The house was used to accommodate farm laborers. They had cabins in the back. Reuben was sleeping in the cabin. McDougall walked in, arrested him, took him to Deerfield Jail. They transported him to Fort Lauderdale Jail. Stacy was identified again by McDougall's daughter. A mob was formed, and they tried to transport him to Dade, Miami Dade, but he never made it. Between fifty and a hundred evil white men overpowered him. Stacy was pulled from the car, and he was hung by a pine tree with clotheslines wide. His lifeless body was still shot with bullets by the unlookers. No one was indicted. Their house was labeled as a historical site. It was renovated and restored. Plus, y'all had it listed as a historical site. Y'all marking certain history, but getting rid of ours. If you're going to make it historical, make sure you know that everybody involved in it. WD McDougall was a farmer. In a time, black people were fooled into shellcropping. We did not get our even share with shellcropping with bean picking and pelters in Pompano. Needless to say, he was also a police chief and a deputy. So, he definitely could have helped with the situation, but he was in with the mob, which is why Reuben Stacy died the way he died. So, again, today, I bring to you a proposal of putting a gate at Westview Cemetery Cemetery. You all can have it listed as a historical site, but we already asking y'all, we need y'all to do y'all part. At the end of the day, y'all getting ready to do something else at Semple McDougall House with a chapel. So, we putting more money into something that y'all feel is history, but you getting rid of ours. You got rid of the Jones Quarters. That's where the Bean Pickers stayed as well, but you preserve everything else around it. Thank you for getting rid of Hammerville Road. That was also a nasty part of history. It's now Martin Luther King, but the work isn't done.
Thank you.
Okay, it's more than a thank you. I need a resolution or something said. Someone point me to, like I'm saying, how do we get Westview Cemetery listed as a historical site?
You can take that up with the state.
Okay, so if you don't have the answer, do anybody else have the answer?
Thank you, Ms. Lassane. Thank you. Next speaker? Thank you.
I'm, I'm asking, do anybody have an answer?
Ms. Lassane?
To how I get this listed as a historical site?
I'm going to ask you to leave the microphone.
I believe Ms. Fezick trying to speak.
Mr. Fezick?
Yes, second. I, I, I understand, um, thank you for coming forward, and I understand that it's, it's very difficult to see things that we love and, and memories when I know that you have shared, not just this one, but with, with other family members that have seen loss of what they see as their history being erased. And, um, I don't know what we can do at the cemetery because obviously I think they've said it before that it's a private, that's currently private land, but if at all possible, we can try to look into seeing what can or cannot be done with partnership of the people who do own it. And maybe it's something that if we're allowed, perhaps, we might be able to help with the gate if we are allowed to do that. So, I would, as, as far as getting the property listed as a historic society, I, you'd have to, again, reach out to the, to the board, I think, and then we'll go to the city, or the state, and we'll see what we can do. But I'm happy to help you look into that just because everybody's history is important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Next speaker?
Roger Phillips, twenty-six, twenty-ninth, Northwest Tenth Street. Uh, Commissioners, Mayor Mark Berman and, uh, City Manager, and Darrell Stalls. HZ Thirty-Six is a substance abuse homeless and mental health awareness state that a group of us have been putting on for the past four years. Uh, we, what, what we envision is downtown Pompano being cleaned up before the, the, before the miracle happens, before the development get there. What I mean by clean up is, is we, we find out the reason and the season for the homeless people, to help them get off the street, to help them find a reason to live, to help them find a reason to, uh, get housing, other than, and, and get off crack cocaine. I, I, I ask, uh, this city commission because it's something that, that everybody, uh, uh, run away from iniquity. The people that's iniquent, the people that, that are less fortunate, as, as we call them, the homeless. What, uh, I proposed in front of this commission is what Ms. Perkins proposed, uh, 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 a while back, was, uh, for you to sit down and seriously get with BSO to form a homeless, uh, committee for the city of Pompano. Because the BSO can't, they, 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 they don't have the, uh, if they have the resources, they're not using them to, to get rid of the homeless people that's, that's being ran to and fro the city of, of Pompano. I mean, they run in one place, and then, uh, Ms. Ms. Fournier helped clean up, uh, Blunt Road along with BSO. Now you go through Blunt Road, where are the homeless people? They're in the orifice of the black community. They are in the community, the northwest section, that's where they at. BSO runs, comes and runs them away from, uh, one sixty-four North Power Line Road, uh, PF Insurance and, and Value Park. Well, well, Darrell, uh, there's nakedness going on, uh, over there by the dumpster behind Value Park. This is where, uh, they change their clothing. The women are butt naked over there, so when you, when you can, send somebody over there in the morning time, so they, you can, you can get quarter to, uh, take them someplace to change clothes, 'cause I, I, I get tired of riding by and seeing naked women in the morning, myself, personally. So, uh, I just ask you, the, the BSO, y'all do something about that, it's horrible. Uh, uh, they go to eat at twelve o'clock, and after twelve o'clock, the place is scattered again, and then we got Darrell, uh, do something about the, the homeless, uh, the, 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 I call it the, uh, jungle. We got a jungle right over there behind, uh, uh, behind, uh, the post office. I call it the jungle.
Thank you, Mr.
Do something about the jungle, Darrell. Go over there and get, help them people, please. Darrell Stowers.
Very good.
Who we love.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Next, next speaker.
Wayne Okin. Hi, I'm Wayne Okin, I live in Palm Air, Pompano Beach, and, uh, I wanna mention that on September twenty-third, the city of Pompano Beach wrongly decided to hold its commission meeting on a highly religious holiday, Rosh Hashanah. Please consider all religious holidays for not conducting such meetings. It's proper protocol for any city to reschedule a meeting for the next business day to include Yom Kippur, Passover, and Rosh Hashanah. Just as the city doesn't hold a meeting on New Year's Day, Lincoln's Birthday, July Fourth, Veterans Day, Christmas, Election Day, and Easter, I'm open to other holidays as well. Any mayor and city management that holds such meetings on these days is expressing a lack of religious tolerance, anti-patriotism, and lack of recognition of the constituents of this diverse community. Early on the first evening of Rosh Hashanah, I mentioned that no such meeting should be conducted. It's offensive, it's outrageous, it's antisemitic, semitic, sorry, antisemitic. I further stated, Rosh Hashanah is the Jewish New Year, and I said it's a time of positive enlightenment and refreshment. With that, the mayor went on to demean the holiday by staging negative treatment of Commissioner Audrey Fezick. The mayor had the city attorney advise whether a commissioner may participate in a meeting via phone. This was offensive, as Audrey Fezick was not available in person. Let's be clear, in the past, several city commissioners advised, they gave no reason to do the same. And the city attorney did not speak in such a matter. There was no commissioner vote on such a matter. This was a staged political assassination of a city commissioner who often disagrees with the mayor and city management. Free speech is part of our National Second Amendment, and in the Constitution. I never read any accusations against city employees nor commissioners by Commissioner Fezick's social media posts. The commissioner simply shared public record, public record. Now, if one wants to draw a conclusion by such information, then our constitutional right in a democracy is not being allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Okin.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Fezick.
Very good. Appreciate it. All right, that concludes, audience to be heard at this point in time. Anyone left will be heard at the end of the meeting. Very good. That takes us up to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion approving item one and four?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item number two is a resolution.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a Second Amendment to the service contract between the City Pompano Beach and SFM Janitorial Services LLC to provide janitorial services, providing an effective date.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. This item was pulled by Commissioner Fezick. Commissioner?
Thank you. Um, so the reason why I pulled this was, was related to procurement. I've been on a procurement bend lately, trying to learn the ins and outs of a very complicated process. Um, so the only reason why I, it, it really has nothing to do with, um, with you, more so than it does, uh, Mr. Alfred, for some reason, and maybe you can help me with this, the E dash twenty-four dash twenty-three that was awarded in, on October fifth is somehow not in the, in the backup year, and also, uh, with the, uh, conflict of interest forms, and I couldn't go back and look through what we had, aside from just the contract itself. So is this something that, that is going to be pending for delivery from my request?
Well, first, I want to address that, um, the staff is the, um, responsible to ensure that the backup material is there. Um, so, um, it may have been part of the additional, the package that was put together, so I just wanted to clear that up. It wouldn't be in my office. Um, as it relates to the public records request, that is something that's being worked on, and I'm hoping by, before the end of the week, that you'll obtain. It may very well be part of that, I can't really be sure for certain, staff is the one that's coordinating and get, and gathering that information.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because the specific piece that I was looking for was the conflict of interest forms, and that I've already been provided, I think, bulk of, if not all of, and it was missing from this request, it was missing from this pile. That was, that was just, just for your note, um, uh, for that. Is this something that we, I saw that there was a multi-year contract as part of, in the back, in the backup, and this is just an annually renewed set price? Are there ever any change orders to this, or ever any add-ons? That was the question I had for you.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, George Boraventura Facilities Operations Director. Um, no, it's a set amount for each year. Each year, uh, eh, the vendor has an increase. Uh, if we need to do add-ons like extra sites, we'll speak to the vendor in regards to that. But so far, we haven't had, had anything.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions, concerns? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier.
Yes.
Mayor Harden.
Yes, item three is a resolution.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a Second Amendment to the service agreement between the City Pompano Beach and Janitorial Five Star Services LLC to provide janitorial services, providing an effective date.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. This item also was pulled by Commissioner Fezick. Commissioner?
Thank you, uh, the, the question I had was answered with the first, they just were lumped together, so they need to be pulled together, thank you.
Very good. You wish to add anything, Mr. Benfica? Nope, very good, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier.
Yes.
Mayor Harden.
Yes, that takes us up to our regular agenda. Item number six is quasi-judicial in nature. Mr. Berman will discuss the parameters we will use.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone, should anyone wish to testify in item number six, they must be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination by the city commission or by interested parties. Individuals who address the commission should state their name and whether they have been sworn. City staff will make its presentation first, followed by the applicant or anyone else wishing to testify. Following the concluding remarks of the applicant, the hearing will conclude, and the commission will make its consideration at that time. All those who wish to testify in item number six, please stand at this time, raise your right hand, and the city clerk will swear you in.
You solemnly swear affirm that the evidence or testimony that you're going to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Very good.
Thank you.
Item number six is the first reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, abandoning a fourteen-foot wide alley lying south of lots one through five within block two Campbell and Saxon Edition Plaid, and north of lots six through ten of the same block, between northeast Second Street and northeast Third Street, and between northeast Second Avenue and northeast Third Avenue, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Good afternoon, Ms. Dolan.
Afternoon, Mayor, Commission, Jean Nolan Development Services. This request is to abandon a four, fourteen-foot alley which is located between northeast Second and northeast Third Avenues running east and west for approximately two hundred sixty-five feet. The applicant is proposing a pickleball facility on most of the area spanning this alley. There is one other property owner included in the block that has provided a letter of acceptance for the supporting, for supporting the abandonment. The review standards for an abandonment have been met, and the planning and zoning board unanimously recommended approval on July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, conditioned on providing a utility easement for FPL and Comcast, which has been accomplished. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions you may have. Uh, I do believe the applicant is in the audience.
Yes. Very good, thank you. Does the applicant wish to make any presentation or just here for questions?
No, thank you, Mayor, Commission. We concur with staff.
Very good, thank you for that. This is a public hearing, is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, just a quick question, Ms. Dolan. I, I see the utility easement, but one of the other conditions was two remaining letters of no objection, and I see the letters of no objection in the backup, but all of those are dated prior to planning and zoning, so what were the two outstanding letters, and are they included in here?
They're included in there, they're only outstanding when we wrote the report, they came in before P and Z.
So, so why was it a condition at P and Z, then?
Because we write our report before the actual meeting, by a couple of weeks.
I'm reading the minutes, the P and Z minutes, so... Okay, so you're saying that in the minutes, while it says that that was, hadn't happened, those letters that came in in early June were the two letters that were referenced here?
FPL and Comcast were the letters that were missing.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier.
Yes.
Mayor Harden.
Yes, that ends our quasi-judicial proceedings. Item number seven is a resolution.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a donation and relocation agreement between the City Pompano Beach and OT Property Group LLC, authorizing the city manager to accept the donation of the chapel and relocate the donation of the chapel to the new location at Centennial Park, and authorizing the city manager or his designated to take all necessary actions to implement the agreement, providing an effective date.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Good afternoon, Ms. Lyons.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, Tracy Lyons, Deputy City Attorney. I was asked to present this item on behalf of the city manager as I participated in negotiating the contract that's currently before you for consideration. The contract provides for the donation and relocation of the historic chapel currently located at the corner of northeast Second Avenue and northeast Third Street, also known as the First United Methodist Church. The intent is to relocate this historic structure to Centennial Park to sit next to the Sample McDougall property. The structure shall be utilized as a public gathering place, and with this location, the city can ins- ensure the preservation of the structure. OT Property Group LLC, led by Mr. Adam Adashi, is the current owner. In its current location, through no fault of the owner, the historic vacant chapel has unfortunately fallen victim to chronic vandalism. Air conditioners have been stolen, copper piping have been removed, and the longer it remains at the property, the further vandalism will occur. Through the terms of the negotiated contract, Mr. Adashi has agreed to donate the legal title of the property to the city. Important to note, Mr. Adashi has also had the property appraised, and the appraisal value came back at one point seven million dollars approximately. Mr. Mr. Adashi has further agreed to reimburse the city for the relocation expenses in the total amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which was the quoted relocation amount, um, quoted to the city. This reimbursement will happen upon one of two events, and I want to note to the commission that this particular clause in the contract has been changed. I provided, I have provided the updated contract to Curvin, which has been signed by Mr. Adashi. The change is, um, the reimbursement will occur upon one or two events happening, either the development or the sale of specific lots B or, and D, the property, rather than the entire development or sale of the entire parcel. That's the only change to the contract. The relocation cost of the four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars also includes the foundation of the property. The city will be responsible for the other moving expenses associated with the relocation, which would include BSO escort and utility, uh, movements involving the county and FEC. Those costs are approximately a hundred thousand dollars. If the contract is approved today, the city will begin the process of relocating the structure in an effort to prevent further damage. And that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions, and I would also add that Dr. Tammy Good is available, and Mr. Adashi is here for any questions the commission may have as well.
Very good, thank you for that. This is a public hearing, is there any input from the public on this item? Please come forward, just name an address for the record.
I don't know if I need to borrow some of your skin to, uh, get what you just got.
Just, I mean...
But, okay, so I'm looking...
Just name an address for the record, please.
Dabrishe Lassane, my address is where I stand, so if you got something, send it, send it right here to me. So, you got the chapel listed as a historical site, right?
It wasn't.
Okay, and they're willing to help y'all get through the process, right? So I'm asking you, because they can't help me, can you help us get the cemetery listed as a historical site? And maybe they would donate something to us, because they donating a hundred thousand to y'all for that. I'm sure the gate is cheaper than that. So like I said from earlier, we're picking and choosing what will listen as a historical site. So if the city can't help me, I'm asking, can you help me?
Ms. Ms. Lassane, that, that, that is our assistant city attorney, so, um, any input on this particular item?
All right, so when I was up here talking before, you didn't point me to her, so now I see who I need to talk to, so that's who I'm talking to.
Address the chair, please, Ms. Lassane. Very good. Further input from the public? Seeing none, public input closed. Commissioners, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. What was the history of how this was designated a historic property, or historic, historic building?
So according to the Certificate of Appropriateness that was actually done, um, in two thousand twenty-two, it was previously listed on the Local Registry of Historic Places in two thousand and six. The Certificate of Appropriateness for a historic structure was done for purposes of its relocation.
So who maintains the local registry?
That is both the Historic Preservation Society, and it also follows both state and federal guidelines.
So if someone were interested in learning how to designate something a historic site, the Historic Preservation Board would be a good starting point?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Welcome. Okay, thank you for that, appreciate that. With respect to this, uh, item, I had, I did have some issues with the agreement, but I, I think we've been able to, um, I, I, I want to make sure the taxpayers are protected, both in the cost and the timing of this, and the way this contract was written kinda left the taxpayers out there with no, um, payment date in the future until every parcel was sold. So, um, we made some changes that tie this to the, the actual development sites, um, so when, if and when those are monetized or developed, um, this will be reimbursed. So I think that, um, gives a little more protection to the taxpayers. I am concerned about the co- I am concerned about the costs that the city will incur. I'd always heard that the chapel will be moved and at the expense of the developer, but it was never really described in detail that it was just the relocation costs, not the cost of the utilities, BSO, all the other logistical costs on the day of are going to be borne by the city, and that has always been the agreement?
That has always been the intent, from my understanding, yes.
Okay, and I've asked this to you, but are there other sources of money that we can tap into to cover some of these costs?
We will be, when that time comes, once the relocation is completed, we will be looking into different funding sources, whether it be a grant, whether it be sponsorships, but yes, that will be addressed in the future.
Okay. I am concerned about the chapel as it sits now, that it is going to sustain additional damage just sitting there, so I think this is a creative way to actually get the chapel moved quicker and in being able to use by people at the park, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Very good, further Commission discussion. Commissioner Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. So the chapel is considered historical, and you're going to move the chapel, which is on the east side of what we call Ward City, so it's still standing there. So we're going to pick it up, lift it up out the ground, because it's history, and we're going to move it next to the McDougall House.
Correct.
So this is what I call saving your history. And when it comes to the northwest, so much of our history has been torn down, and just recently, I guess about two months ago, the city tore down the Westview Cemetery office. And it was probably a dilapidated building, probably unsafe and all of that, but still it was our history, and it was torn down without the consent of the Commissioner or the community. Same thing happened to Freeman Funeral Home, although it was a funeral home, it was still part of our history, it was torn down as well. And what we have here is a preserved chapel, history again, that's going to be preserved and moved to a different location. So I would like for especially city staff to remember this, when it comes to tearing down our history in the northwest community, it's just as important to us as your history is to you on the other side, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I don't have a problem with you preserving history, but I do have a problem with history being torn down in the northwest without the consent of the district commissioner or the residents. Thank you.
Very good. Further Commission discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harden?
Yes. Item number eight is a resolution.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute appropriations contracts between the City of Pompano Beach and various nonprofit corporations, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Mr. Waters?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, Joshua Waters, I'm the city's budget director. I'm here to present for your consideration a resolution allocating funding to nonprofit organizations through the City of Pompano Beach's Community Partnership Program. Consistent with recent years, the Commission approved three hundred thousand dollars for this program in the fiscal two thousand and twenty-six budget. Each year, this program allows the city to partner with local nonprofit organizations that deliver important services to our residents. Through these partnerships, we're able to extend the reach of the city into the community and further the city's strategic planning goals in certain key priority areas, including workforce excellence, education, behavioral health, senior services, community events, and preserving cultural heritage. This year, the city received forty-seven applications requesting a total of over nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in funding. Of those organizations, twenty-eight, or approximately sixty percent of the applicants, are being recommended for funding, with an average award of around ten thousand seven hundred dollars. Collectively, these organizations anticipate serving over forty-seven thousand city residents through programs supported by this funding. To ensure a fair, transparent, and accountable process, the city continues to contract with our partners at Strategic Philanthropy to manage the application and review cycle. Their responsibilities include applicant education, documentation review, evaluation scoring, and oversight of award distribution and reporting. Strategic Philanthropy employs multiple safeguards, including verification of IRS forms, board governance, matching funds, financial audits, and incorporation documents to ensure that each selected organization is both financially sound and compliant with city requirements. In addition, all funded organizations are required to submit quarterly narrative and financial reports, which are carefully reviewed to confirm compliance and to evaluate program impact. Any unspent or ineligible funds are returned to the city at the end of the year. Through this process, we're confident that the Community Partnership Program continues to advance meaningful and measurable outcomes for our residents, while safeguarding the public's trust and ensuring appropriate stewardship of taxpayer funds. With that, staff recommends approval of the resolution allocating the FY two thousand and twenty-six Community Partnership Program funding as presented.
Very good, thank you for that. This is a public hearing, is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions, concerns? Vice Mayor? No? Very good, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harden?
Yes. Item nine is a resolution.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a license agreement and synchronization agreement between the City of Pompano Beach and the Florida East Coast Railway LLC, FEC, to install improvements and to synchronize railroad-grade crossing and traffic control devices within Atlantic Boulevard, within the Atlantic Boulevard and Dixie Highway intersection, and FEC right-of-way, and to provide annual maintenance of the railroad crossing within the subject intersection, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Good afternoon, Ms. Penny.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The item before you tonight is to approve to agreement with FEC, Florida East Coast Railway, that will enable them to complete the work, the upgrade crossing Atlantic Boulevard, therefore paving the way for us to complete our own intersection work for Dixie Highway Segment Two.
Very good. This is a public hearing, is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions, concerns? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So earlier this year, I asked our city manager explicitly if we had started the Atlantic-Dixie construction project without the required FEC approvals, and I was told no. Is this approval here required for us to do the realignment and the construction work at Atlantic and Dixie at the FEC tracks?
Yes, it is needed, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So city manager, absent city manager, stand and say, I mean, Mr. Donovan, you weren't the one that gave that answer, but can you explain why the answer was no and this answer is now yes, and is this an additional three million dollars on top of the forty-three million dollars that this project has already cost?
I think this is already part of the budget, correct, Ferdinand?
Yes, Vice Mayor, these monies were already budgeted in the project. Now, there is extra costs that is being incurred, but this is monies we had anticipated, not necessarily just for FEC itself, and we had gone to the county back in two thousand and twenty-four and gotten some escalation monies, so there is no additional cost to the city per se. There is an increase, obviously, to the original budget that we had for FEC.
So that's the next agenda item, and when I go to the amendments back in two thousand and twenty-two, there are no changes to Segment Two funding from the county?
No, there are no changes to what happened initially. The county had approved a particular budget for the project.
Thirteen point nine million.
That is correct. We went back, because this budget was based on figures that we had set aside a number of years in advance. We went back to the county and we made the argument that the market itself had increased in the CPI for a number of reasons, and they concurred with us. So they granted us an additional one point six million dollars, which we knew at some point we would have to expend for the project. We had a cost, I mean, an estimate from FEC, they have since increased the numbers, but the provision we have is what's being used. In fact, there'll be a little bit of monies left over from the escalation money even when we pay for that. Built under three million, I'm also suggesting for the Commission to approve some escalation costs, because the work, obviously with FEC, it's not a hundred percent even, they've given us an order of magnitude. We don't anticipate that it should increase, but we want to be on the safe side, so we are getting the approval to have that buffer in there.
Okay, so in the backup, in both Second Amendment and the Third Amendment, I see the one point six million of escalation, so I don't see that as being new in any of these documents. You're saying it's new relative to the original agreement, so that was added in Amendment Two? But if it was added in Amendment Two, then it would have been underlined and looked like it was new, and it does not. So is that one point six million of contingency for Segment Two new, and when was it new?
Alright, perhaps I may have misunderstood your earlier question. There is no new monies.
Okay.
This is escalation money that was awarded already to the city. What we'll do in item, in the second companion item, is to enable us via the county to access the monies now. Typically, the escalation money comes at the very end of the project.
I saw that the timing has changed in the next item, but not the amount. So what we're facing here is we didn't actually have the required approvals when we started the project, is that correct, Mr. Donovan? If we have to approve this to do this destruction? Did we have the required FEC approvals when we started Atlantic and Dixie construction?
No, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we started it without that, which is, again, another one of those things that we've been misled or told a different narrative on by our city manager, who's not here to answer, of course, but this three million dollars, how much of this then is incremental to the original budget of the forty-three million or whatever it was? Is this costing us a million more, two million more?
It's a million, one hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five and eighty-six cents.
About one point one, one point two million? Okay.
What was that?
So the project, you said one million, one hundred something?
Yes.
Okay.
One hundred forty-five, eight forty-seven, and eighty-six cents.
So one point one million incremental costs for this project, and we have to approve this in order to actually finish the project, because we've been sitting with the mess, you know, it's pretty on the east side, and it's landscaped and pretty on the west side, but we've got the misalignment and mess at the tracks and still good luck. So this project is demanding us, we pay more to continue on this failed approach to this area. Okay, I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Very good. Further Commission discussion? Commissioner Fezick?
I had a question, I had a lot answered, but I had a question related to the contingency with the extra four hundred thousand dollars that was added in to... Could you explain that, please?
Yes. FEC came back and increased their cost of the work. What I want to make sure that it's understood, it is an increase in FEC's cost, it is not an increase in the budget of the project, because we anticipated at some point there would be escalation for the project. Now, what we are doing is we are asking the Commission to put four hundred thousand dollars as a buffer. It is not money that for sure we will utilize. We're saying, in addition of the one point one million dollar that FEC has raised, we're saying to the Commission, we don't want to come back, because the work from FEC won't take place for a few months. They are going to go and fabricate all these very unique items and come and install them. It's possible between now and then, they may say, oh, city, it is, I mean, it's been our experience with the agency, they are not very easy, I mean, at times to, I mean, to work with, so we want to be sure we have that as a buffer, just in case.
Okay. Is it standard in these types of contracts to have, or these types of projects, to have a sort of a blank check, or, I mean, in this instance, it's a four hundred thousand dollar, you know, buffer, can then be carried out without additional approval, or is it standard in cities, in other cities perhaps, or in other types of these projects where you get the actual dollar amount, and then you do the project, and then anything changes, you come back?
It is standard practice in construction. We could always do differently if that's the Commission's wish, but every construction contract, you want to put the contingency monies in there exactly, because you don't want to incur any delay, assuming that FEC came back a month from now and said, you know what, we're fabricating the rail and there's an extra cost, maybe the supplier, there's something happening, tariff, who knows, and there's an extra cost. It saves us the time to have to come back and then put an item, get the city attorney's office to prepare it and route it through there. It takes time, time, and it's, I'm sorry, staff time, and it's consuming, so that's the reason why in virtually most construction projects, the contingency is built in at the time of awarding the contract.
Okay. And what's the, how many times have we had an increase so far with this project?
We have not had any increase. This is the only item we've dealt with FEC, and obviously, this is a very unique, we have tried our best to actually negotiate and see if we could bring it down, but those are, again, very unique item. FEC is the sole entity that can perform the work, because they would authorize anybody else to do it, it is their own track, it's safety equipment, it is devices, it is things that, it's hard really for us to argue with them with the increase.
Great, thank you. And then, one other question was related more to, when I looked into the deeper, outside of the cache of this project, and looked more into the responsibility of the crossings and keeping things up to par, if you will, is that, maybe, and this might be more of a Mr. Saunders thing than you, is that something that is also sort of factored into this? That, our ongoing costs, is that in this as well? Just this one piece?
Long-term maintenance would not be factored into this, but the agreement provides for that, and of course, I can have Mr. Saunders expand on that, but every agreement we currently have with FEC carries a yearly cost, whether it's the lease and whatnot, but I will...
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. In response to your question, there are, at each crossing...
Name.
Okay. At each crossing, there are agreements within the city, so if you look at, don't quote me on the streets, if you look at Third, if you look at Tenth, all of those crossings where FEC's tracks are, there is a crossing agreement. Typically, those crossing agreements have been maintained through our Public Works Department, and so this, we were required to make it a part of our overall agreement, ongoing maintenance for these areas. Every, I believe it's, I don't know if it's monthly, but there is a payment made for any kind of maintenance done at those track crossings.
Okay, and is that different than the lease? So I remember we got a memo that was a significant lease increase. So what I'm just trying to do, and maybe you can help me piecemeal this together, because I feel like sometimes when we have these projects, we have, you know, a little here, a little here, a little here, I'm just trying to make sure I can see the bigger, larger picture at the same time we're doing this, so I can have a clear understanding, and so taxpayers can also have a clear understanding of what we're trying to...
One of the things, after I got into this process several years ago, I recognized that FEC is one of the largest monopolies in the country, particularly here in the southeast, and so they generally control all lands where their tracks control, and so as a result, as I said, at every crossing, you will have a crossing agreement. Separate and apart from that, you will have leased areas, because we are occupying those areas. One of the benefits to the residents of Pompano Beach is that you have, on the east side of Dixie, you have bus stops, you have rails, you have landscaping, you have sidewalks, and FEC has been aggressive in making sure that they are getting market value, and that is covered through our leasing agreement, separate and apart from the crossing agreements which happened at those roadways where the tracks are.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, if you can provide your name?
Sir, if you can provide your name and title for the record.
My good friend Curvin, James Saunders, Assistant City Attorney. One other thing, if I may follow up, Commissioner Fessick and possibly Commissioner Fournier, when you talked about the city's participation, there has been long involvement by the city with FEC. Typically, because FEC, if you've ever tried to contact anybody in that organization, typically they have technical advisors who you run everything past. This item, particularly the Segment Two, Segment Three, a lot of those were run through our technical folks for FEC in the early years, and I can't give you an exact time period, but it's been prior to us coming before you. Often, you don't touch FEC without touching their land, excuse me, without having conversation with their technical people. It's my understanding, based upon the documentation I saw, that we did have the approvals through the technical group for FEC. And then, because the lawyers now get involved, myself, along with their general counsel, began to have conversation, and there was a lot of strong-arming. Mr. Berman was involved in some of those as well, and your Bob would give us a call occasionally in regards to multiple emails that we sent over time in order to get an agreement, specifically the, what you have before you, the license and the synchronization, because it involved a tremendous amount. Even when it came down to these final agreements that you saw, we wind up working with another group altogether in order to get these documents finalized, when we finally negotiated it through. And so what you have before you is something that took quite some time to obtain and asked that you would approve it today. Thank you.
Very good. Vice, Commissioner Fessick, you're done. Very good. Further commission, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I do have some follow-up questions about that, and I was going to ask about the memo that you previously wrote, and it alluded to these complexities. But I understand that memo is about the lease, which is what we're talking about here, but is not on the agenda today. None of that is on the agenda, but there is another issue with the FEC that we've been discussing and going back and forth on, and there were significant escalations in the lease costs to the city. So number one, are we going to see, is that negotiation complete at this point, or is that still ongoing?
That's ongoing.
Still ongoing. So we don't have an item coming up on the next agenda for, or any time in the near term for that?
If you remember, Commissioner, that agreement was a part of the acquisition by the city for Dixie Highway. That triggered our responsibility. As a result of that, that particular agreement is set to expire next year. So we will have ongoing conversation, but we'll have, I believe it's somewhere around September, October of next year, which, for that time, it will come back to you.
And I do want to point out, this is another one of these unintended consequences of some people thinking it's a good idea for us to acquire roadways here. Over time, we have to pay to maintain them. Yeah, at that, you have the right to take a lane out of it then at that point, but then we also have to pay these agreements and whatever the FEC tells us. So I have concerns about that agreement. And have you considered, I mean, you said for landscaping and benches, have we considered saying we, like, can we give it back?
Well, again, because if you, if you watch the traffic and people, how they utilize the northern travel of the MTA, excuse me, the bus service, is specifically utilized by residents, used by students going to school, so there's a, there's a great need for it. And so we are having conversation, and it's not just this jurisdiction, it's every municipality along the FEC corridor that is having this conversation with FEC, and we're not in a big negotiating posture.
And I'm not suggesting we give it back to eliminate these modes of transportation. I'm suggesting we give it back so we don't have to be responsible for it. I would assume they wouldn't eliminate them either, but there's, that one concerns me. But this is, back to this item, this is more money being spent to take a lane out of the road at Atlantic, which has been a wildly unsuccessful, unpopular project. Yes, it looks pretty, but there was a way to thread the needle here and actually do the right thing, and it wasn't done. And I do want to remind people how they paid for this. It was over 17 million dollars through the Northwest CRA, paid to take a lane out of Atlantic Boulevard between Dixie and Northwest Sixth. The GeoBond, where it was pitched as big improvements, was 11 million. The Surtax was almost 14 million, so we applied to the county, and of course, we're awarded money for this project, which plunged my district and our city into absolute gridlock, and the rest was from small amounts from FDOT and the tree fund. Thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion. Commissioner Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're talking about the railway, at this particular intersection, I'd like to just sway away a little bit, and I'd like for you to give some thought to the fact that Bright Line, as of July 2025, had a total of 180 deaths, making it the most dangerous passenger train in America. And we've had quite a few deaths here in Pompano with this Bright Line train. And I understand that we're trying to control the traffic devices and all of that with this particular project. I'd like for you to keep in mind the deaths that we've had from this train. Those intersections, or, well, I think two main intersections in Pompano, which is Dixie and Atlantic, and I think the other one is on Sample Road, where we've had quite a few accidents. So I'd like for you to consider all of that when you are doing the infrastructure improvements for this particular project. And just to give staffs a heads up, if you can get back with me on why we don't have the horns of the train blowing? Why did that stop? Why are we considered a quiet zone? So if staff can get back with me on that, because if you don't see the train, you might hear it. But we don't have any kind of horns in this area to say the train is coming, the only the arms go down, and that's it. So that's just something I would like for staff to get back with me on, to see if we can look into how we can stop some of the deaths with the, with this Bright Line train. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Segerson Eaton, yes?
Thank you. So, yes, I've often wondered why we don't have any fencing, and if I'm hearing clearly and understanding what Mr. Saunders has been illuminating is that anytime we do anything on the east side of Dixie Highway, we have to pay the FEC for the use of the land, to put anything. They're very recalcitrant. They kind of, they own it, and every city has had to deal with them in the same way. So, you know, like they say, everything costs money. And, you know, I know the next item coming up is, you know, related to the same sort of thing, so if I could take the liberty, Mayor, just to, you know, sort of talk about both. I mean, I've lived in the city of Pompano Beach for 35 years, and I've never seen it look more beautiful on Dixie Highway. And it's a pleasure to drive down, and I've got to say thanks because they're working very quickly. It's gone smoothly. I do the north-south nearly every day. And, you know, Dixie Highway, well, I do want to say too, it was the GO bond that the residents of Pompano Beach approved back in 2018. And with all the escalating cost, yes, it's part of District Four, the Northwest CRA, it's part of, you know, District Two. We were blessed to be awarded Surtax funds from the county when we compete with the 30 other cities. And I just want to make a note that that was free money. And at the December 10, 2024 meeting, when the first 12 million Surtax funding became available and needed commission approval, both Vice Mayor Fournier and Commissioner Fessick voted against that free money to improve what I consider the invisible dividing line between east and west in our city. And in the 35 years, I have never seen it look better. And it is a pleasure to drive down. I'm proud, I feel proud. It gives me gratification. So with this item, we need to kind of finish the project that the people voted for, and we need to complete the rest of the project, too. And I think, you know, having the Surtax funds is something of a gift from the county. They choose who they're going to give those funds to. And we're competing against every other city. So I'm going to support this item and the next item for those reasons. Thank you.
Very good. Further, Commissioner Fessick.
Thank you. All right. First things first. Number one, I am absolutely finished hearing anybody criticize anybody else's vote up here. We make decisions based on what we believe with the best information we have at the time for the residents that we serve. I don't try, I will not chastise you for your vote, and I will ask you to not do that to me in the future or ever again.
Will I have free speech?
I'm not done. Thank you.
Commissioner Segerson Eaton, Commissioner Fessick has the floor.
And that's enough, thank you. Secondly, my only concern with this is when we get into the same, the same run here, right? Like, there's things that are not done, and we've done, put the cart before the horse. We've spent, like, at some point, you just start chucking money at a project because you say, okay, we have to get things done, but what if we do something, and then they come back through with negotiations and the lease, and now they want to go higher because it's a stopgap, but now we've thrown so much extra more money at this? I just, I'm concerned that we've sort of hit this, this portion of this project where we're going in like three different directions, and I just would love to see it a little closer and tied together so that it makes a little bit more sense for residents than potentially coming back and having another line item where we're going to bump it out for another six months, 12 months, et cetera, and then we're still maintaining the brand-new landscaping, or we're still doing things with this project. I'm just concerned how many times more we're going to see something come back at us for this same run of road.
You referring to this item here?
This particular item, yes.
There is nothing left with this item, except for the lease that actually deals with Dixie Highway, as I've explained. Now, I don't want to bring it back because Mr. Saunders explained it. We, staff obviously will accept, you know, really how we proceeded. We engaged FEC as early as 2019. This work did not start until 2023. It was four years after we had engaged FEC. So there was no expectation for us, in fact, most of the technical review had been sort of agreed or blessed. There was no expectation that the legal side of it would have been that complicated, but it is, it is what it is. We acted what we thought was in the best interest of the city. We had other Surtax monies, we had other funding that we're committed and we needed to move with the project, but that's it. There is no surprises. FEC has been the only unknown here. They have, unfortunately, the jurisdiction over the railroad, and this is land that, fortunately or unfortunately, that they own, we have to abide by the pricing they have, you know, requested from us. That's it. There is nothing that we foresee, or for that matter, that would be an issue. Now, obviously, escalation is something that we contend with every project. I thought it would be, would not be prudent for me not to ask for the extra buffer between now and the time that FEC comes and do the installation. But I'm saying it's at the will of the commission. If we don't want to have an escalation, I'm sorry, the contingency in there, and that would make you more comfortable, I would not object. I mean, it wouldn't be my preference, obviously, but I, to answer specifically your question, there are no, nothing left in this project. All these costs were anticipated, not necessarily the FEC figure, but that's exactly why we went back to the, to Surtax and the county, and we requested extra money because we anticipated there would be a need for just this cost. The budget hasn't changed. The monies that were approved are exactly what will be used for the project.
Okay. And this is, and this is, the Surtax funds, are there any other projects? Like, let's say if there was an overage, let's say you're done, is there any other way that we could, let's say there's 300,000 left of the 400 that you didn't need, does that, where does that go? Is that reabsorbed into anything, or?
If there are savings, of course, I don't know, we may want to address that, but typically, the money stays with the city because it was allocated to the city, and I'm sure that there are ways where we can do, we can, we can go back to the county and ask it to be re-appropriated to another project. The Surtax does pay for.
I'm just trying to find this extra paving money, that's all. Just kidding.
We anticipate about 110,000 to be left from the escalation monies.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So unlike Commissioner Fessick, Commissioner Segerson Eaton, I am fine with you criticizing me like you always do and my votes, it doesn't bother me one bit, but what I'm not okay with is you bad-math or telling people there's something called free money, because that doesn't exist. There is no such thing as free money. The Surtax money was voted on by the residents of Broward County when you increased your sales tax from 6% to 7%. So on every purchase you make, you are paying an extra penny per dollar for this Surtax money. It is not free. Every single resident who spends money in this county is paying for it. Now, what Pompano did is, we applied to the county for our allocation or some chunk of this Surtax money for this project, which eliminated a lane out of Atlantic Boulevard and beautified the area. We could have applied for a project that added a lane and beautified the area, but that's not what the city did. So yes, we were given that money, it's not free, it's not free one bit, because every one of you, including you, me, all of us, pay for that money, and the city decided that we were going to apply to take a lane out of a road instead of add a lane to a road. We could have done that, and maybe would have been ranked high also, who knows? But the point is, it's not free, and the beautification part of it has nothing to do with the functionality part of it. The last thing I want to say is what Commissioner, to address Commissioner Perkins' comment, I was recently interviewed about train safety because it turns out Pompano Beach, I think, has almost 40% of the fatalities in the county for Bright Line. We have six railroad crossings in 1.3 miles in Pompano Beach. I actually think 33rd might be the most dangerous one. So Hammondville, when I was interviewed, you know, you can go through each one of them and think about the approach to MLK in Dixie and how strange that is with the stop signs and how traffic doesn't work there. There's so many of these issues at crossings that we should be taking a look at. I know that we don't control that, and we can't do much, but there are safety issues on our roads, and we, like, I talk about this with homelessness, we have one of two homeless shelters in the county, we disproportionately bear the brunt of that problem, of that issue, right? If you live out in Weston, it's not the top of mind for you. But for here, railroad safety is top of mind for us, or it should be, because we bear the brunt of it here with having almost half of the fatalities in the county and so many crossings. Thank you.
Very good. Further, Commissioner Smith.
I took a look at the rendering of this project when it's completed, and I can't help but think that when the project's done, that we're going to increase the safety. Commissioner Perkins, I too have concern that you do, but if you take a look at the rendering of the completed project, the traffic and the pedestrian, in my opinion, will be slowed down and attention will be, I think it's a safety issue of what has been designed. And if you haven't taken a look, I wasn't involved in the project, so I asked for the rendering, but I was very impressed with the safety issues that were addressed in the final project. So I can't wait to see it, and I'm supporting it.
Very good. Commissioner Segerson Eaton.
Yes, just to respond, you know, I'll happily stipulate that all money comes from to taxpayers when you're in municipality, so, however, we don't automatically get it, was my point. That's money that the county chooses to give us because they control it. And it's not a criticism, it's merely a fact. We had an opportunity to get 12 million from the county in Surtax funding for transportation, and we beat out 30 other cities to get it, and with your And with your concern, the fact is, Vice Mayor, you voted no. It's not a criticism, it's just a fact. Thank you.
Very good. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
Well, I was going to ask if I could make a motion before you, to amend the motion before you said you'd call the roll.
Sorry.
I was, and no.
No? Here. It's a no. Commissioner?
Sorry, yes, that's a no.
Okay. Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
No.
Mayor Harden?
Yes. Item 10 is a resolution.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a third amendment to the inter-local agreement between the City of Pompano Beach and Broward County for Surtax-funded municipal transportation project, Dixie Highway slash Atlantic Boulevard, Carter Improvements, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Once again, Mr. Tony.
Good afternoon. Fernando Eaglebon, Director. This item is the companion that actually addresses the escalation monies. Again, this is where money is already awarded to the city back in 2024. What this item enables us to do is to access the money now as opposed to accessing it at the end of the project, so putting less, you know, really, delay in, you know, really, providing for the funding. There's also some dates that ministerially were incorrect. Somehow the city, I'm sorry, the county executed a different version than what the commission had approved, so it enables us to get the document in sync.
Very good. Thank you for that. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none? Public input closed. Commission discussion. Questions? Concerns? Seeing none? Let's call the roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
No.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice, Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harden?
Yes. Item number 11 is a second reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute six contracts for professional services for sustainability-related projects, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Moved and second for discussion. Good evening or afternoon again, Ms. Dolan.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Jean Dolan, Development Services. This is the second reading of the agenda item to accept the six signed contracts from six of the eight qualified firms selected to provide future sustainability-related projects for the city based on the response to RFQ 2025-037. These contracts do not include a scope of work, but allow staff to create work authorizations of under $200,000 per fiscal year to do sustainability projects as they are funded over the next three years. There have been other changes since first reading, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you for that. This is a public hearing. Any input from the public on this item? Seeing none? Public input closed. Commission discussion. Commissioner Fessick?
Thank you. So this is one that I was a little concerned that there were six contracts lumped together. And when I dug down into them, looking at the professional services for sustainability, I was curious, I saw that there were, deep in the, in the backup, there were pictures of burrowing, burrowing owls and, you know, it was, there's different types of, different types of invasive species eradication, and I wonder if this has anything to do with the airpark or the environmentally sensitive lands as part of that?
No. That's not a sustainability project.
Okay. So, well, just because it was, that's clarifying. Is this, I also noticed that Aptim was part of this process. Is that, can you explain to me which each, you know, even though I've, I've read through the backup, can you explain how you're applying each, or how you may apply each company to which portion of which project a little bit more and just, I guess, a Reader's Digest version?
Sure. Thanks. When a project gets funded, we'll look at each firm to see which one had the best experience in that topic area, and that's who we'll pick. The first thing we're going to assign is the adaptation plan that we're having $195,000 worth of funding from the Florida Resiliency Program. So that'll be the first project that we actually bid. We don't have any other projects budgeted in this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you. And so if next year, let's say, so how long is this, this agreement good for?
Three years.
Three years. Okay. And what would be the harm in either separating these or having them come back to us with a, with an actual dollar amount? Because my issue is not just approving and authorizing, it's, it's more so, I'd like to know what we're approving and authorizing rather than approving and authorizing a blank check of up to.
Yeah, that will come out in the budgeting process. We'll be given money for some of these projects each budget year, and that's how we'll know what we're going to assign to these companies based on their skill set.
Okay. But do we, so what are we planning on, so we're just blindly picking companies that we choose to use in the future, sometime within the past, within the next three years if money becomes available, but without coming back to commission?
Without having, the real time savings is not have to bid every project. So we'll already have this list of consultants that are qualified to do the work, so we can negotiate with each one of those based on their qualifications, and we won't have to do this whole RFQ process every time we have some money to do a sustainability project.
Okay. Now, with, with an RFQ process, though, wouldn't that necessarily potentially be competitive at, at some point?
Takes too much time. We'd end up using, in fact, this process took us like nine months. So if we tried to do that every fiscal year, we'll never have time to do the work.
Okay. Is there any way in the future that we could potentially have a better dollar amount or, or have a, the ability to have a checkpoint? So we know that we're going to use these companies, but then you'd have to come back for authorization. Is there any way to change that so that the, we just come back for the authorization for the company so we know what's being done?
I mean, I don't have a problem with that. It's just what it's, what the contract allows is $200,000 per fiscal year total. So after, anything spent over that, we would have to come back with those particular contracts.
Mr. Donovan, I could see you moving, so.
Is the commission, is the commission looking for each contract to come back for consideration?
I would just like to, I'd like to be able, like before, I would like just to see what we're actually buying for the 200, or up to $200,000. I, I find, I'm, I'm fine with approving vendors. We have chosen to be trusted ones and, and well-equipped. I would just like to know what we're buying, and I don't want to also tie the hands of any future commission to, to not see those contracts because that's the situation that I've been in where sometimes things are done and I haven't even known that they've been done, or I find out that we have a contract, and then there's a contract for three years. So buying us to vendors that have already been vetted, I, I fully understand the, the process there, but if we can just split this and have it come to where we at least get to see the contract and, and approve the work that's being done and, and know what it's going towards, I think that that would be a more responsible use of, of time and money.
Yeah, I, I think that process will work out because no funds have been assigned to these projects yet. So this is just having the, the list of the contractors. If the commission wishes to approve funding to these projects, that's a bridge we'll have to cross at another time. And that's assuming, you know, we have the funds to apply for these, to allocate to these projects.
Okay. Is there a way to, is there, Mr. Furman, is there a way you would amend the, I'm sorry, is there a way you would amend this, this to be able to approve the vendors but not approve the authorization without coming back to commission?
It's somewhat cumbersome to do it that way. We can bring each one back to you individually if you'd like that. At this point, we're approving the vendors and, and the, and the contracts, so to split them up, I mean, it, it just... We're, we're, we're authorizing execution of the contracts now. That implicitly authorizes the vendors that were selected, so you can't really split the task up. If you need them back and you want to look at them individually, they should be provided in backup individually for your review. I believe I saw them in there, so, but if you want them brought back, you know, again, staff will do whatever the commission feels is appropriate.
My concern is just that there's, there's six of them, but we're only spending $200,000. We're not up to $200,000. We're not dividing, are we dividing that $200,000 between six vendors or just picking one?
First fiscal year, we have $195,000 contract from DEP to do an adapt, adaptation plan. That's the only project we're doing, so one of those firms will do that project.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Very good. Further commission discussion. Seeing none? Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harden?
Yes. Item 13 is the first reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a third amendment to the inter-local agreement between the City of Pompano Beach and Broward County to provide community shuttle service, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Mr. McCon?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioner Rob McCon, Public Works Director. This third amendment to the inter-local agreement between the City and Broward County is to provide the community bus shuttle for the city. The purpose of the amendment is to incorporate the contract that the City Commission approved July 22nd with limousines of South Florida. Specifically, it incorporates the rates in the contract, which, based on the four routes, Monday through Friday, the estimated annual cost is $697,000 funded by Broward County Surtax. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none? Public input closed. Commission discussion. Questions? Concerns? Seeing none? Let's call the roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harden?
Yes. Item 14 is the first reading.
Mayor, could we possibly take a short break?
Sure. Yeah, let's take a 10-minute recess.
Thank you.[1292.73]
City Commission meeting, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, after a brief recess there. Item fourteen is the first reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, amending Article Two, Section Six to Chapter fifty-seven dash one, seventy-four, laws of Florida, Special Acts of nineteen fifty-seven, as subsequently amended and supplemented, otherwise known as the Charter of the City of Pompano Beach, imposing limitations on the length of terms of offices of the mayor and commissioners, while expanding future terms of office of city commissioners and staggering said terms, providing that if the amendment is approved by a majority of the voters at the special election of blank in two thousand twenty-six, that such amendment shall become part of the city's charter upon certification and acceptance of the election results, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Mr. Berman?
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to the direction given me by the City Commission, I have prepared a draft of the proposed amendment number one. There are several issues that you had requested, that we increase the terms to four years, that we stagger those terms, and that we also provide term limitations for a term full, three full, four-year terms, and that's the way it was written. The way you have to do this is the way I proposed it, and the way it was proposed is basically that, and there's some placeholders, and again, this being a draft, we are proposing that if you want this done, first of all, and to take effect in November of two thousand twenty-six, that deadline, I believe, is in June, curving, and shake your head or not shake your head, for the June twenty-six agenda, does that come around June?
Agenda?
For the election in two thousand twenty-six.
Yes.
November.
Yes, November.
So we have to know what we're doing before, at least before June. If you want the additional extended terms to start with the election of two thousand twenty-six in November, then we need to know ahead of time via a special election what it is that you want to do, and to see if the public passes it by that time. So we're going to need those answers in order to have our election finalized and ready for November for the general election of two thousand twenty-six. That's why I put in a placeholder here for a special election. If you do not, and you choose not to have a special election, these extended terms will not be starting until two thousand twenty-eight and two thousand thirty, basically. So you'd be kicking the can down the road a little bit. Your timing is up to you. I have to merely make the point and make provision for the special election, so that'll be something for you as a commission to discuss. In order, you'll notice, and I'm sure you have, in order to stagger terms, you have to make some terms a little longer, some terms a little shorter initially. We can't cut terms. My proposal was, there are three odd districts and two even districts, so I propose that the odd districts be the initial four-year and the even be two-year. That basically coming from the standpoint that if I'm going to get commissioners mad at me, I could either get three mad at me or two mad at me. So again, that is in there as a placeholder. That is not necessarily how it has to be done. You could draw commission districts out of a hat, for all I care. Whatever you think is fair or a proper way to do that, it would require a little bit of a rewrite, which certainly I can do, but it's in there to make the point, this is how it needs to be done. The only good thing is, those that start out with an initial two-year term and then go to a four-year term would not reach their term limits. They would be extended, whoever, whatever districts those are, they would not have three full four-year terms, and I made that clear, so when it comes down to it, no one's saying, oh, you already had a term. That two-year term does not count. So I made the question as simple as possible for the public to decipher and determine. I think I've got all your issues in there in the brief request that was given to me, and I think it's, at this point, I'll stop and let you, unless you have questions, certainly happy to answer them, but it's, I think, for you guys to talk about it and see what you want me to do at this point. I'm happy to make whatever changes you see fit or answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Berman. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Please come forward. Just name an address for the record.
Heather Gilchrist, thirteen forty-one Southeast Ninth Avenue. I am also on the Charter Amendment Advisory Board that discussed this, and I just wanted to emphasize a few things that were brought up in our board discussions. With the caveat that we are just an advisory board, I wanted to note that we were unanimously against a special election. We all think that this is a good idea, that voters are going to like if they understand the implications of it and why we think it's a good idea, but we really, and I want to, Chris is outside as well, Mr. Kremzie, and he was going to come in, but I invite him to come and correct me if he disagrees with anything. We thought that it was very, very important not to rush this, not to make voters feel like this is something that's being pushed first with, the commission has a PR problem right now, right? We want to make sure, we think that this is the right thing, that voters will agree this is the right thing, we want to make sure that voters see it as the right thing. So rushing it, we think, is going to complicate that process. So with that said, we're just an advisory board, it's up to you guys to decide, but we unanimously thought this should not be rushed, and that a special election was an expense and, more importantly, a PR crisis that didn't need to come about. With that said, we do like this idea, so I hope you guys will too, and I think that the education process is very, very important in this. This should not be a marketing campaign to voters, this should be an education and discussion process with voters. We really, really wanted to make sure that that was also part of the process, and I think Mr. Berman did a really good job of explaining, making the issue very clear and the implications very clear as well. So well done on that, and that's it.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Berman?
If I just may respond briefly, and I appreciate the board's review and their recommendations. Again, there is no marketing campaign when it comes to these things. Florida law prevents us from marketing or sending out. All we can do is educate and send educational materials or respond to questions or inquiries. Thank you, Mayor.
Educate.
Next speaker?
Marketing.
Next speaker?
Michael Skaversky, sixteen thirty Southwest Fifth Avenue, Pompano Beach. Didn't we have something similar a few years ago? And it was no, no, no. It failed by a landslide, a landslide. So what is this going, it was something similar, it was something similar. We were against it. I could see term limits, that's good, but as for this other stuff, staggering stuff, it was a definite no. Remember? I don't understand what this is coming up here for, what am I, what am I wrong about?
Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Mr. Berman? Mr. Berman, go ahead.
Term limits. It's term limits, that's the difference.
The other one was moving into.
Mr. Berman can explain. Let Mr. Berman explain. Go ahead, Mr. Berman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Skaversky, again, something similar but not the same. A few years ago, commissioner, residents were asked, you want to expand the terms. Again, commissioners were tired of running every two years, and the staggering is so that there's not a possibility of everyone changing in one fell swoop. That's bad government, basically, or could be, if everyone suddenly not completely changes. So those are the reasons for that, but what you didn't have a few years ago were extension of terms but with term limits, so you know that they would be termed. So this is a different question, a different issue. Is it similar in nature, a part of it? Yes, but it's a different question.
So the only thing you're adding is term limits, essentially?
Correct.
Yeah. And I just said, term limits are fine, but the other stuff got blown out of the box. It was straight-out no's. I mean, we stood out there, and you didn't even have to tell people to vote no, they knew it going in. They saw what was going on. So now the answer to this is no. Term limits, yeah, I could see eight years, if you want to be, if you want to be a commissioner for two and two, and then you want to run for mayor, then you can get one term as mayor, a total of eight years. She's been up there, Perkins has been up there a long time, she could, you have, you can, well, you're history, but she could get one more term. And Rhonda's been up there a while, she could get one more term. But then after that, it's eight years total, period. But as for, as for the other stuff, forget it. No way. We, the people voted down like that.
Different question.
It's amazing. Just, you don't even care what the people say, do you? It's of no concern, you do whatever you want, do whatever you want, get rid of lanes on Dixie Highway, the people just can't stand it, and then when they run for election, whoever's for getting rid of the lanes is going to lose their election. I mean, whoever's for the lanes is going to lose their election.
Very good. Further input from the public? Please come forward. Just name an address for the record.
Good afternoon, Ann Bosworth, four zero one five West Palm Air Drive. So term limits sound great. I'm all for that because, and I think the real important thing is that no one person's vision of the city gets meted out and impressed upon everybody for as long as they can get themselves elected. We, it's the same thing when I teach. Even from semester to semester, students are different. They bring different generational ideas to the table, and one of the troubles I think we've had here is, no offense, but there are people who have been dug in for a while and they're comfortable, and they've had an established pattern of doing things, and then, you know, when somebody else comes with different ideas, they get shot down, they get campaigned on and railed on by friends of their friends on social media. So if you're only doing this to deal with that, I would agree that it's a crummy idea. If you're doing it so that you include more people in a healthier system, and if it's not going to turn into a situation where you kind of come up with who's going to run because you think that you can add to your stash of guaranteed voters in that way, then I'm going to have to say, there aren't enough districts, term limits, or anything. What you all need to do is work together better and untrench, unentrench yourselves and respect us better as people who have brains who can think about things and don't need to be talked down to, and talk to each other better. I hear stuff that sounds like middle school, middle school. I see things online where the people who are the friends of some of yours that you all smile and chuckle at, I see your social media chuckles and things because you think it's so cute that somebody else was offended. If, if that's what we're adding to, then skip it, it's a waste. Change what you do. Change your attitude. Grow up. This is like a scene from The Breakfast Club half the time, right, where the jock and the popular girl, some of you aren't that popular.
Ms. Bosworth, back to, back to the issue.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if you want to do it, do it for the right reason, do it in the right way. And when Mike was saying about marketing, what he means is that the blurry line between marketing and education, like we've had so many times, needs to end. Bring out two people, both sides.
Very good. Further input from the public? Please come forward. Just name an address to the record.
Hello, I am Pastor Dr. Sherry Abram, retired teacher in Broward County, mission pastor in the tri-county area. It's so much to be said today. I think this meeting is going really well. I appreciate all of our attendance. This is important. Life is important. I'm here to preach the gospel, so I'll tell it like I hear it, see it, and read it. To my co-teacher, I understand where you come from, and I concur. I like to say I am pro BSO because I was in a predicament with the Broward School System, and they assisted me. The First Amendment, I am pro. And these are some of the things that we're going to discuss today.
If I could ask you to get back to the item.
Yes. And with the item, we're talking about tenure, we're talking about longevity, and we're talking about doing your jobs. In doing that, and in saying, I think it was Michael said that Commissioner Perkins has history, and I appreciate Commissioner Perkins speaking up for rescue. Okay, and back to the tenure, the longevity. I want to say that I'm all about tenure and longevity, but the skip, the hop, and the loop in between, I am not. The other thing is, I think it was stated eight years, but if you're doing three terms in four years, that's 12 years. Thank you!
Thank you. Next speaker?
I am going up without notes. Wayne Oaken, 4106 West Palm Air Drive. I have no problems with the term limits, extending some terms, et cetera. I do have a problem in LLCs contributing to commissioners and a mayor. I'm not trying to focus. When I say mayor, unfortunately, there's only one. I think that anybody contributing towards a campaign, it should be a citizen of Pompano Beach, should not be a corporation, should not be some hidden third party. We should know exactly who is campaigning. So I would like some campaign finance reform.
Very good.
And I think this is very important.
Stay on the target, the item here.
It is on target, and I really don't like being...
Mr. Oaken, I'm being honest with you. That's off the topic that we're dealing with. I mean, I respect your reason for saying what you're saying, but now is not the time.
My time is being...
I'm just asking you to stay on the item, please.
Are you done?
Sure.
Okay. Again, I have a problem with the campaign financing, so if you want to extend the terms, I think there needs to be some reform. I was on subject, and that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Mark Contragola, 1401 South Ocean Boulevard. I just want to say I'm in favor of virtually everything that's in this proposal. I think that what people have to understand is that staggering this commission will retain institutional knowledge. When I sit out here and I listen to the intelligence with which you speak to certain items, I don't know that people coming in new and fresh can start out of the gate without having the person sitting next to them being a veteran of this process and this proceeding. I'm also in favor of term limits, and I can see a need to extend the terms so that, again, so that we don't have this food fight every two years. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker? Further input from the public?
Andrea McGee, 133 North Pompano Beach Boulevard. I wanted to just make two comments and just bring up a concern, because having been through this when we did this a few years back, Mr. Skaversky's right in that a lot of the voters spoke up that having the ultimate voice from the voters is the two-year terms, and it's good enough for our state reps. It allows the voters the loudest voice possible to either approve or disapprove of their government every two years. The other part of it is actually much more for the commission to consider, and that -- and I would hope residents as well, is our positions on county boards. And as far as term limits, I understand both sides of wanting that, but I do just want to articulate that there are certain boards in the county, such as the MPO, Lega Cities, that the cities that end up being on the exec boards and having the most power to make a county-wide impact tend to be the cities that do not have the term limits. You have certain cities throughout the county who are able to have their representation on those boards for a longer period of time, which would then give Pompano Beach, which is now one of the largest cities in the county, a stronger voice on said committees. So that's just something else to put in your heads, and having sat on those boards, I know, MPO, it took me almost five and a half years to get to exec committee, and when you have the turnover there, when you're going against sitting chairs or others that have been there for decades, it's just an interesting other thing to put in the wheelhouse, consider, and for voters to consider as well, is having the city... How much strength the city gets to play in county boards. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Further input from the public? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, question... Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have a lot of reactions to what was just heard. It's an interesting debate. I do first want to thank the Charter Advisory Board here. I read all of the minutes, and all of your meetings included really thoughtful discussion and dialogue, which was helpful to inform us on differing opinions on both the timing of doing this, whether we do it, how we do it. So thank you very much for all of your work on this important topic. In response to Mr. Skaversky, like, you know, the no, 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 we all remember that, and to me, the issue there was it was three grabs from the commission. It was, we want to move it to March elections where there's no turnout, so no one's gonna show up and vote except super voters. We're going to stagger terms, we're gonna make them four years. To me, so it was a package that I think didn't work. So this, to me, seems like a more reasonable package of amendments. So if you're going to go to four years, I think you have to go to have the term limits. And I think that combination actually makes a lot of sense, especially when you start thinking about campaign fundraising and financing, because when you run every two years, it's expensive. You know, a four-year term probably costs a little more, but you're not constantly raising money. So in two-year terms, after one year, I feel like the officials are out there campaigning. And so if you want to get some of the fund, like, the campaign... If you want to address some of the campaign funding issues, which we can't legally do, it's not the jurisdiction of this board, one way to do it is to make us, you know, to make that less of a thing where you're not running every two years. And then I also agree that while I'd love to have this in place, if it was going to, for the November election, I don't think it's worth doing a special election for. I think the combination of the cost of it, the really, really low turnout that we would get at a March special election with nothing else really on the ballot, will be... There's a perception issue already, and I think that would kind of not sit well with people that we're trying... People innately think you're stuffing something down their throat or something. So I like the idea of having a really long runway for it, so people to understand and to digest all of it. And then it wouldn't go into effect, I guess, until 2028, so this is really like a big future policy change for the city, not, you know, less... I'd be fine with it impacting us, but I think it makes more sense to do it in November. So, that's it. And people are always gonna find a way, so they're always gonna find a way around the system. But I do think the turnover and new faces, new ideas is a good one. And I was talking to Mayor, the Mayor of Lighthouse Point, the other day, and he... They have term limits there, but they have 11,000 people, so they struggle... They just put term limits in place, but they're going to struggle to find candidates, he said, who are... And in Pompano, we don't struggle for that. We have elections with pretty good slates of candidates, so I think 12 years is plenty of time to be a local elected official. Thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Commissioner Fessck?
Thank you. I would have to agree that I want to thank the Charter Advisory Board. And Chris, I see you back there. You waved, just so Heather was looking for you. No, but thank you for taking the time and really doing the due diligence. I also read through all the minutes and had a lot of questions answered. I think that the biggest problem we struggle with is the rush of doing anything. So whether it be a resolution, an ordinance, a contract, a marketing campaign, the rush is something that is not always necessary. And I want to really even impress upon maybe this body that with the level of detail and care that our board, our advisory board, put into this, it might be a good idea for them to also map out, long-term, you know, for that, not a special election, but for that next election, a marketing campaign, or not necessarily a marketing campaign, but an education campaign that doesn't have such a marketing bend to it, where they can really line out what they think based on best practices or education that they think that would help to educate voters to make a decision that they fully understand, rather than something that we want them to do. So I would even sort of add on to this, that I would task our Charter Advisory Board with that and potentially even a budget to carry out in partnership once they have a plan that we vote on. Term limits, I think, are a great idea. I think nobody needs to do this forever. I think I said that from the very beginning. This is not a... This is a part-time job for part-time energy. If you're here to make this a career, there's still ways you can be a career politician if you choose to do that, but you start somewhere and you move on somewhere else. This is something that requires fresh blood, because we have fresh blood coming into the city all the time. We have young people that move back in, new life, in, out, different types of professionals that come in. And I think what's been the most enriching for me so far in this whole process is how many wonderful people I've met from all these different varied backgrounds that I probably would have never met had I not even decided to go knock on everybody's door and do this crazy adventure. So I love term limits. I love the idea that we stagger the terms. At first, I was thinking, oh, gosh, what would we do there? But again, institutional knowledge, just even sitting here for almost a year, the things I've been able to learn, I can see how that would be very valuable and be very rewarding to make sure that nobody was all fresh and new at the same time. So, and it would be a good move for the city as a whole. So a few little modifications, and that's what I would support. Thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Commissioner Segerson Eaton?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank the Charter Review Board for their thorough analysis, and I'd have to say I would agree that the place for it is the November election. And, you know, term limits, four-year terms and term limits, three terms, that's fine, 12 years, that's a long time. And staggered terms, I think, are one of the most important elements of this. Continuity of government, institutional knowledge, historical knowledge, and the depth of what we learn as commissioners, you know, how RFPs are done, how CRAs work, Florida statutes and other such law, FEC being the topic of the day. And so I just don't know how District Two and District Four got so lucky and have to run for two, two-year terms in the next four years, but... And that's only two of us, the smallest districts and the most diverse districts. But that's Mark's fault, frankly. It's gotta go one way or the other. The mayor does run still every four years, I guess, and so the first four-year election will be, if this passes with the residents' blessing or not, you know, we'll see, but... So there'll be 135 and the mayor running for four-year terms, and we, District Two and Four, have to run for a two-year term. So, anyway, you know, it is true, running every two years, and it's gotten to be more and more expensive, the cost of signs, mailers, campaign events, et cetera. And it gets to me money, but we don't actually take money all the time. It's not like we're collecting checks, just in case the public might be under that impression. We have to open a campaign account and declare our candidacy, and then we are able to receive contributions, and they are, of course, you know, all of the laws and the filings that go with that transparency is there, but we can only take contributions if we have a campaign account opened up. But overall, it might be good for the city, certainly term limits, staggered terms being very important. So, thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Commissioner Smith?
I just want to confirm that the special election covenant from the minutes is $177,000 to run it in March?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further commission discussion? Commissioner Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. When this was put on the ballot a few years ago, I was one of those that did not support it, simply because it did not have term limits. So I am in agreement with the term limits, and this should have been really put in place at the same time when the mayor's seat was extended to four years. This is when it should have been put in place, because we have a ceremonial mayor. So I support this particular item, but I'm just kind of undecided on special elections in November, where some old school... So I remember when all of our elections used to be in March, remember, Rex?
Oh, yeah.
But I guess you're right, more people do turn out in November, so I'm flexible with that. That's it, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, just a couple of things. First off, on campaign contributions, I just want to set the record straight. We can limit campaign contributions at the city level. Is that correct, Mr. Berman? Of course we can. We can institute rules for our own campaigns. So if we wanted to make a rule that no corporate checks allowed, we could do that. Just I wanted to set the record straight on that. This particular thing, you know, I brought it up to move it forward and to have a discussion about it. I mean, it doesn't really impact me too much, because I've got a four-year term. But I am philosophically opposed to term limits. I think that takes the freedom away from the residents. If they want somebody out of office, they'll vote somebody out of office. It's happened before with long-term incumbents and short-term incumbents. The voters are amazingly perceptive at getting rid of people they don't want in office. That's why I don't think the term limits are a good thing. But I would support term limits to get the increased length of terms and allow the staggering of terms for city commissioners. I think that's important. I think it's good governance to have staggered terms, number one, so there's not a wholesale change, as unlikely as that is. But it's not just the wholesale change at the commission level, but it's also the constant, the huge disruption in the city to have everyone running at the same time. I just think... I don't think that's good governance. And also, two-year terms, as Vice pointed out, you're always running. You're always running with a two-year term. It's terrible. I've been there. I was city commissioner for many years, and yeah, you deal with it, because that's the way the system is. I have always thought longer terms, four years, would be better governance for our city. So that's the only reason I would be willing to support the term limits. Philosophically, I'm opposed to it, but for the greater good for the city, I could support it. As far as a special election versus the November election, I get it. We get more people... And here again, just a little historical footnote, I was one of the ones that voted to move our elections to November, from March, which put us in the November election cycle. At the time, it's like, well, we'll get more people out to vote. It'll be cheaper. It'll be better for the civic engagement, the population. What happened is, you've got people who show up, they don't know the local issues, they don't know anything, except they show up once every four years and they vote for president. That's all they do. And they will go down that thing, and they will recognize somebody's name and say, oh, yeah, I know who that is. So to vote for the incumbent, it's almost an incumbent reelection tool, having November elections. So I regret my vote on that particular issue. For that reason also, I think a special election, you'll get people who are informed, you'll get people who care about the governance of our city, the people who pay attention to the details of what really goes on in the city. So I would be... I know it's expensive, and I too appreciate the service of our Charter Review Board. I mean, I do appreciate what you guys do. It makes a difference. But I would still support a special election, even though it is expensive. But I'll go with the will of the commission, of course, and, I mean, it's, like I said, it's not really about me, it's more about the commissioners than me. So that's my two cents. So any further commission discussion? So, any further commission discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes, you know, and it, and it seems to me, you know, that the mayor has four-year terms, that yet you have to run citywide, and you have no special privileges. I would, if, if we staggered terms, it might be fitting that the mayor could go for a six-year term. I don't know if we can do that by charter, or if that has to be done, but seriously, I mean, the mayor is the figurehead of the city, and to have a mayor, whether you like him or not, he is duly elected by the residents of the entire city. And I just want to point that out, that maybe the mayor should also go for a six-years term. You'd still be running, we would still be having an election, because either it's going to be presidential year, or it's going to be off-presidential year, so, you know, governor.
That's, that's a completely different, different question from what we've.
It is, Mayor, but I just want to point it out.
Okay, okay, and I, I think Mr. Berman also had his pin up.
Yes, please, Mr.
You've still got the floor, Commissioner.
No, I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt the commissioner.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, she still has the floor after you make your comment.
All right, again, the way this is proposed, and again, just to bring up the fact that in order to stagger, you're going to have to do a procedure, there would be three commissioners running in one cycle, two commissioners and the mayor running in another cycle, so there would always be three, and three would be an even ballot. If we expand the way this is written, if we ever have an extra district, which I don't want to talk about now, or bring up, or start a conversation about in any way, hopefully, but it will work in, in this as well. I think basically, you might want to parse this into sections or motions, maybe first deal with the special election issue, and make a motion on that, see where the commission lies as a whole on that, then deal with the other issues, and I think the, increase, increased terms, term limits, and staggering could probably be all handled in one. Basically, I think we need to know when you want to do it first, if that's what you want. Then, at some point, if there is no special election, certainly there's no rush, we have until June, I believe, we don't want to wait till last minute and drive Cervin crazy, but you have some time to think about how you'd want to do that staggering, whether you want it to be a drawing out of a box, which we only did once here, or whether or not you want to just name the districts, so I'll need time to rewrite, depending, but I think you might want to tackle this now, not as a whole, but look at, since, based on the discussion, there may be concern about different elements of this. Again, I put this all together based upon the, the shovel of, of requests that were provided, so, thank you, Mayor.
If I, if I made, so, all right. If this is approved in 2026, the next election would be, if it, if it goes to the November ballot, the next election in '28 would be 1, 3, 5, and the mayor?
That would switch it a little bit differently, so we might, we'd, we'd have to shuffle a little bit, if you, if you don't do a special.
And so, and, and as for the question of the mayor's term, is that something that's determined by ordinance or by a referendum?
That was by referendum.
Can it be accomplished by ordinance?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have.
An ordinance approving the referendum, but, but the people need to vote on it, the Charter needs amendment.
Yes, Mark, thank you. All right, I, I probably have some more, but I'll, that's good for now, thank you.
Further commission discussion?
Mayor?
Mr. Cervin?
Yes, Cervin, Alfred City Clerk. I just wanted to just make clear that according to the Supervisor of Elections' recent fee schedule update, the referendum, whether it's on a special election or a general election in November, would be the same. So the cost would be about 170,000, don't have the actual number, you quoted it earlier, Commissioner Smith. But yes, it would be the same regardless of whether it's a special election or general election, just wanted to make that clear.
Wow, what a ripoff. Okay, thank you for that information. Appreciate it. Further commission discussion? Commissioner Fessick?
Well, I, I like Mr. Berman's idea here, let's, so I'd like to make a motion to, let's just start by splitting this off into the, a motion to split it off and make a decision whether we go with a special election or the November election.
Okay.
We'll start there.
How about we get an affirmative, an affirmative, affirmative question?
Motion to approve the special election, do that as an affirmative and see where it goes in March, and that way, we can start with the timing of this.
Mm-hmm.
I can't make a motion, so I leave that up to you. I'd like to, but they don't let me.
Right, so I, so actually, I'd like to make a motion to, since I, since I was saying that things, we need some time, so I'd like to make a motion to put this at the November election, regular election. Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have this question on the ballot, the regular November election of 2026, would that be it, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
November of 2026, moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Let's go ahead and call a roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harden?
No. Okay, so we're going to have it in November.
So for 170,000.
No, we didn't save anything.
So, Mr. Berman?
Yes, sir.
At this point in time, do you need more input before you bring it back with a date in there? Or can, can we just put the date in there? Well, I think we probably need some other guidance, right?
At this point, I would need, well, I think I just got my guidance, I would need to go back, I'd need to, need to amend the, to the election, and I need to change all the proposed dates, when this change would take place, when that change would take place. You're still left with the staggering as proposed, you're still left with the term limits as the commission requested, and I can bring you back a more complete, or at least a little bit carved down, a little bit more toward your liking for November, and you can reconsider it again at that time.
Okay.
It will not come back on, I don't know if it'll be on the next meeting in October, but it would probably come back in November in a different form.
Very good. All right, then, at this point in time, should we strike it?
You can move to, to table it to the November meeting, or strike it if you want, and I'll just bring it back if you.
All right, whatever, whatever you, whatever you advise, okay. Postpone it until the November, what is it, 13th?
Yes, seconded.
Yes.
So postpone this item until the November 13th meeting?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. Okay, it takes care of 14. 15 is the first reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, to modify District Three and District Five by amending the boundary line between both districts, providing for severability, providing a repealing clause, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for discussion. Mr. Berman, once again, you're busy.
I get all the hot ones today. Basically, well, actually, this one isn't hot. The John Knox Village, the way the districts have been carved out for many, many years, there's about 1,073 residents in John Knox Village, 90 residents reside in the South Garden neighborhood of John Knox Village, are located currently in District Three. The rest of John Knox Village, the majority is in District Five. And getting a complaint, because at some point, they were voting in the same district, and the Supervisor of Elections caught on and changed it at some point, so you have a district that clearly was intended to be in District Five, with a block of homes that were excluded. And it kind of just doesn't make sense, because we talk about being here 30 years, I seem to remember, you know, Herb Skolnick, Commissioner Skolnick, God rest his soul, and the desire to have all of John Knox Village in, in that district. And in doing the research, and going back and talking with Kurt Spitzer, who is our districting expert, and, and was at the time, and still is, he was given information that drew the boundary line at Southwest Sixth Street, and that's why 90 residents were excluded from John Knox Village, from District Five and are in District Three. They have reached out, it does appear to be an error, no disrespect whatsoever to their current representation by the District Five Commissioner, but there, they had an election, and that was, should have all been there, they were all really concerned and wished to be in the same district as the rest of their neighbors, and that's what this does. This corrects what we believe to be just an error from Southwest Sixth Street to Southwest Sixth Court, which would have made sense, it doesn't make sense to do it any other way. The district commissioner from District Five, hopefully, is, would appear to be in favor of it, the district commissioner from District Three would appear to be in favor of it, the residents are in favor of it, so I am doing what was requested, to bring this before you, amending the boundary line from Southwest Sixth Street to a revised location of Southwest Sixth Court. I provided you with the map as an exhibit attached to this ordinance, and also in backup the prior map and what it would look like now. Between first and second reading, if this is approved today, I'm adding a Section Six, that the city clerk is directed to transmit a certified copy of this ordinance to the Supervisor of Elections, which he would have done anyway, but I'm, I'm just making that part of the, for second reading of the ordinance. There are really not too many questions. I handed out, and I think it, some of it was in backup, the requests from the residents in the neighborhood to be with the rest of the people in their neighborhood as well. So hopefully, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I'm just trying to get everyone what they want here. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. This is a public hearing, is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so I discovered this when I was not invited to campaign events, and I was like, I have constituents in John Knox Village, and it, but it's 90 homes, and it makes total sense, unless you want to like thumb wrestle or something, it makes total sense for these residents to be part of District Five and the rest of John Knox Village. So I, I'm in support of this, I mean, it's, it does seem to be an error at some point, because it's just one strip of villas there. So, thanks for doing this, Mark.
Very good. Further, Commissioner Fessick?
I just had a question when I was going through this, and I was frantically trying to go through the Supervisor of Elections, you know, websites to pull numbers and what, what registered voters looked like in each district. I know that we have a lot of, with the pomp coming, we have a lot of potential additional residents that are coming to District Five, and that prompted the discussion to potentially look at having another district as, as a whole. So my question is, is, do you have the, do you have the numbers? Because it just, I mean, when you looked at it, when I pulled up just our district map, it, it looked more like, it just looked like there was this like, in a weird little carve-out, so I wasn't sure if we had, if we were going to be balanced in that way, if it made sense.
Well, redistricting could change all that at some point, but if there is redistricting, I'm, I have to deal with the here and now, unfortunately, and I don't mean to be disrespectful in that response, we're talking about 90 residents, I did check with the expert on redistricting, that would not change the legal requirements of state, federal, and the Charter in terms of balance and number of, of residents, it's a small amount compared, and that's why in the WERAs language, I gave you the total amount and just the amount affected. So that's what I can deal with today, what's going to be later on, you know, we could certainly deal with, I assume, one community would be, I can't say it would be in the same or different district, but it would be probably together, and I think this is a first step before we even do anything else, I think it's a good first step, respectfully.
Thank you.
I don't get to vote and form policy, but.
That's cool, thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Perkins?
I, I was listening to you, Vice Mayor, and if you're okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Well, but if we had more residents in the city to do the same thing, we're starting a trend, just for those 90 people. I remember the 2020 census stated that District Five had the most residents of all districts, and we're putting 90 more there, but, but just, you know, I, I hear people say a lot to me that District Four should include Caria City, so what if they get together and decide, they want to do the same thing? And here we go again, making special exceptions because of what, you said Supervisor of Elections have somebody voting one place and not the other, so they'll probably come up with a good reason as well. But I, I hear you, Vice Mayor.
I think it try, triggers a different threshold, maybe, like if to move, this is such a small number.
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, very good.
It triggers what again?
Sorry, go ahead.
So I, I think, and I think it's probably where Mr. Berman is, is where he's going, so there's certain rules, you can't move like large blocks of people to change districts without kind of redoing everything, or make sure, making sure it's balanced. So I, I think, and maybe we should let Mark explain it, but if you moved a certain number of people, you have to rebalance everything, this is such a small number, it's 90 homes, you know, do we do the, do the parade when we walk through there? Like when you walk through John Knox Village, it's like the villas that are on your south side, those, just those little homes, like those villas along there that are in my district. I mean, I, I don't care, but they, they pointed this out, and it's confusing for them, because they have, to have two different precincts, and different like polling, you know, like issue, and it's confusing for the voters in there, so, and it's only 90 voters, so.
Mr. Berman?
Well, since you brought that up last, my research also indicated those homes were there, they weren't added later, they were there at the time the initial districting was done, it's not like they were added later and just, it never changed. This appears to clearly be an error, and that's why you're not going to find that in other districts. But I also want to make clear that Vice Mayor Fournier was included in every email from the district residents, was informed of this process, and I also reached out, I know you just reached out and got the okay, I also reached out, I couldn't say it before, outside this and violate sunshine, but I also reached out and made sure it was okay before I did it, unlike the odd and even number of districts, which I, I didn't have a chance to do, but again, the Commissioner has been fully versed on this, and, and informed, and, and has been agreeable, so I'm processing again what I believe everyone wants for this. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call a roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harden?
Yes, item 16 is a resolution.
Resolution, the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, appointing blank to recycling and solid waste committee of the City of Pompano Beach for a term of two years, said term to expire on October 25th, 2027, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for discussion, I'll go ahead and nominate Tony Kissel, incumbent, District Three. Further nominations for this item? Closed. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item 17 is a resolution.
Resolution, the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, appointing blank to the recycling and solid waste committee of the City of Pompano Beach for a term of two years, said term to expire on October 25th, 2027, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Alexa Simone, alternate two, District One. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. All right, item 18 is a resolution.
Resolution, the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, appointing blank to the Gulf Advisory Board of the City of Pompano Beach for a term of three years, said term to expire on October 23rd, 2028, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for discussion. Vice Mayor?
To nominate Michael DeBarry, incumbent.
Very good. Mike DeBarry, incumbent, District Three. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimous. Item 19 is a resolution.
Resolution, the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving censure of Commissioner Audrey Fessick for her disparagement of city employees through her use of private social media, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for discussion. All right, this, this item is on my list, it's an unusual situation, since I was the one who brought this up at, at our meeting, and so, and it really doesn't fall to, to a particular staff member to present this item, as staff doesn't really have any power over the City Commission as a whole. Basically, the only people who stand in, in judgment of us and our actions are the body, the commission, and the voters, and of course, you know, the governor, the courts, stuff like that. But I brought this up because of some issues that Commissioner Fessick, and, and, and I'm going to have to, I have to name these, I have to name the Commissioner, of course, because that's what this is about. And, Commissioner?
Before you get started, I just.
Commissioner, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. You're out of order, thank you. But it has to do with the actions that Commissioner Fessick has been taking on social media, and the way our employees have been highlighted. And our employees, they work, they work for the city, under the city manager, they don't work under the City Commission. The City Commission really is forbidden by Charter to, to really have dealings with our employees. And, excuse me, and through the. And, excuse me, and through the actions that Commissioner Fessick has been taking on her social media site, personal social media site, it's impacting our employees. And let me, let me just start out by saying, what we're talking about is we're talking about a censure. That's not a sense or, you know, this isn't about First Amendment and all that kind of stuff. But there are social, there are First Amendment, of course, ramifications here, but censure is a formal public statement of disapproval issued by an official body toward one of its members for misconduct. It is official reprimand usually for unacceptable behavior. That's what, that's what we're here to talk about. We're not talking about censorship, which is the suppression of restriction of speech, information, or expression by an authority to control what is seen or heard. That's not what we're trying to do here. I'm trying to, the reason I brought it up is I'm trying to impress upon one of my colleagues that the behavior that has been taking place, I consider unacceptable. And that's why I brought it up, and there was, I made the motion to bring this up on an agenda item so we could, we could discuss it. I felt it was fair to have it on an agenda item so everybody has an opportunity to talk about it. So what's been going on? Basically, I've got, I've asked staff to put up a couple of things on the overhead. You can see it on the computer. You can also see it on the computer screen over there. And what these, what these things are, these are posts that Commissioner Fessick has posted on her private Facebook page or Instagram page, I'm not sure which it is, but I mean, I've seen them on Facebook. I haven't necessarily seen them on Instagram. But they're, they're naming employees and others, also private, private companies that consultants for the city, but I'm not concerned with that. That's a completely different issue. I'm concerned with our employees. So this has been happening where she has been naming our employees on social media posts and alluding to certain behaviors by our employees and inferring on, in the posts that there is something untoward being done by our employees. And honestly, there's a time and a place for that. If anyone thinks our employees are doing something wrong, absolutely. I would expect that to be reported somewhere, but not just posted on social media. First off, of course, we've got our city manager. That's who takes care of the employees of the city. Above the city manager, of course, you've got the right to go to the Office of Inspector General. You also have the right to go to the State Attorney's Office. You can also go to the Florida Division of Ethics. I mean, there's a whole host of places you can go if you believe there's bad stuff happening in the City of Pompano Beach by our employees. But a social media post is not the avenue that should be taken. Our employees have been, like I said, they've been, they've been posted out there. So like I said, this is, this is just one post. Can you move on to the next one? Here's another one. It's, you know, and it's, the type is small there. I think most of the people in this room have probably already seen these posts. They're still out there. You can, you can pull them up on social media if you'd like. I, you know, we have blocked out the names of the employees on these posts because I don't want to perpetuate our employees being put through the wringer, for lack of a better term, unnecessarily. This really has damaged our employees, and that's what this is about, and I'm not going to damage them further. Let's move on to the next one. And then these are just examples that, you know, like I said, I think most of the people in this room have already seen these, but I just want to make sure that we know what we're talking about so when we have our discussion here, we're all on the same page. I think you've got another, another one. And finally, I think you also have a video up there also, don't you? Is there a video? Yeah, can you play the video?
So let's talk about vendor selections because residents deserve to know how that process really works. In August 2023, the committee chose Vermelo, Ajamil, and Partners to design McNabb Botanical Gardens. Now, funny thing, they're the same firm that worked on the Maikai renovation in Fort Lauderdale alongside Mad Room Hospitality, the same group we once tried to bring in for McNabb House. Now, who was on the vendor selection committee? Let's read the names. Paul Fisher, Lamar Fisher's son, Kim Briesmeister's daughter-in-law, Assistant City Manager, RMA and CRA staffer, and [inaudible] Development Services, a former RMA employee. What's a bit odd is that four out of the five of the sheets for Vermelo and Ajamil had their first two criteria rankings, with each of the first two with a range between zero and 40 points, at 40 points each, times four. Only one person voted them a 38 choice. They were clearly the leading choice. So the people scoring the vendors were the same ones tied by family and business to the very consultants and politicians who stood to benefit. Does that sound competitive to you? Or does it sound like insiders approving insiders?
The beep, those were to protect the employees because the employees were named in that video. And Mr. Berman, also at this point in time, I believe you have a letter from BNA. Can you go ahead and, they wanted that rendered the record at this point in time. Can you go ahead and do that?
Sure. I have it here. Dear Mr. Harrison, dated October 26th, from Vermelo, Ajamil, and Partners. Vermelo, Ajamil, and Partners Incorporated BA values the opportunity to work with the City of Pompano Beach Community Redevelopment Agency on the design of the McNabb Botanical Gardens. We are committed to bringing forward a project that enhances the community, celebrates its heritage, and fulfills the vision for this important public space. We are writing to formally address recent public statements made by Commissioner Audrey Fessick on social media that contain incorrect and misleading information about our firm's involvement with unrelated projects and organizations. Specifically, Commissioner Fessick asserted that Vermelo, Ajamil, and Partners previously worked on the Maikai renovation in Fort Lauderdale in collaboration with Mad Room Hospitality, and implied that this association influenced our selection for the McNabb Botanical Gardens project. For the record, Vermelo, Ajamil, and Partners has never performed any design, consulting, or professional services for the Maikai renovation project in Fort Lauderdale. Likewise, our firm has never had any contractual, business, or professional association with Mad Room Hospitality prior to their preliminary discussions with the CRA regarding potential operations at McNabb House. These discussions, as we understand, concluded without any agreement, and they had no involvement in the CRA's professional selection process. Our selection in August 2023 as a design firm for McNabb Botanical Gardens was made independently by the CRA through established and transparent procurement procedures. Any suggestion that Vermelo, Ajamil, and Partners receives special consideration or is selected due to prior associations with other entities is categorically false and misleading. As a firm with more than four decades of service in South Florida, we take great pride in the integrity of our work and our transparent relationships with our clients. We view Commissioner Fessick's repeated public misstatements as harmful to our firm's reputation and potentially detrimental to the city's effort to advance a transformative project for the community. We respectfully request that this letter be entered into the official record of the CRA Board and City Commission proceedings regarding the McNabb Botanical Gardens. Thank you for your attention. We remain dedicated to working collaboratively with the city and CRA to deliver a project that will stand as a lasting community asset, and that was signed sincerely, Randy Hollingsworth. He is the Director of Landscape Architecture Planning and Urban Design on behalf of Vermelo, Ajamil, and Partners. So...
Very good. Thank you for that, Mr. Berman. Appreciate it. They, like, as I, as I indicated, this is not about, this is not about our consultants, our vendors. This is about the employees. That's what this item is about, but they wanted this entered into the record as a result of the social media posts by Commissioner Fessick. Mr. Berman, could you also, April 8th, 2025, you sent a, you sent a memo to the city commission, mayor and city commissioners, was use of social media. Can you, can you read that?
Sure. I have it right here. This is to mayor and city commission, not directed to any particular commissioners, all commissioners and the mayor. Recently, I have observed the use of private social media sites as a tool of governance by city commissioners. Accordingly, in additions, in addition to the mandatory training you've received regarding public records and sunshine law, I feel it prudent to provide some additional guidance regarding this practice. First note per Section 119.011, subsection 12, Florida statutes, that the use of social media sites as Facebook or Instagram by city commissioners in connection with transaction of city business constitutes a public record, and commissioners would be responsible for ensuring that the information is maintained in accordance with the public records law. And see Attorney General opinion 0807, also Bear versus the Scambia County Board of County Commissioners, 2020 Westlaw 13918667, U.S. District Court, that's out of the Northern District of Florida. Accordingly, postings dealing with city business posted by city officials on social media sites, even if private and not city-provided sites, must be retained and not deleted for the records retention periods required by Section 257.366 Florida statutes. Contact the city clerk's office for information regarding retention of these records, which appears to be for a 90-day period of time. In addition, with regard to use of social media, you should note that conduct outside of the physical work environment, including on social media, can create or contribute to a hostile work environment. Such conduct outside of the workplace that has a foreseeable adverse impact on an employee's working conditions may be actionable to the extent that it affects the employee's working environment. Accordingly, comments or actions taken on social media sites by elected city officials deemed to be harassment may result in employer, city liability, and to the person who posted such comments. Note that per Section 13 of the city's charter, members of the city commission shall, underlined, deal with city employees solely through the city manager. Per Section 34.001 of the city's Code of Ordinances, it is possible the city would not pay for litigation expenses of an election official that violates the aforementioned charter provision. Indemnification of the city official may be refused by the city should the city commission determine that good cause exists for such refusal as set forth in the above referenced section. Please feel free to contact me should you have any questions in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Appreciate that.
Sure.
So, once again, this is about the employees. This isn't about our contractors. This isn't about outside companies. Our employees are the ones that I'm concerned with. Our employees, they've got nowhere to go. They reached out, as they are supposed to, to our human resources department for help because they were being singled out in posts on social media concerning supposed corruption. Though they reached out to HR, "Help us." And no indictment of HR, but HR looks at it, conferred with our city attorney, with our city manager, and said, "Well, there's nothing we can do. We have no way to stop this. We have no way to control what a city commissioner does. It is outside of our realm." That's the response the city gave to our employees. So they didn't know what to do. They wrote letters. I mean, we've got, you know, multiple letters from employees. I mean, as, these folks, they've got, they've got no, nothing, they've got no help. And it's gotten so bad that, okay, we've lost employees now. People have quit. Also, I know that employees have lost all their employment opportunities as a result of social media posts. I mean, this, this is, this is serious stuff. I mean, we run, we run for office, and look, you want to put up posts on Facebook, Instagram, wherever, without me, I'm fair game, as we all are sitting up here. We're, we're elected officials. But the folks that went to school, got their education, got hired by the City of Pompano Beach, that's their real life. And what's happening is damaging these folks, and that needs to stop. It needs to stop. I mean, it's, it's, it's making our city a bad place to work, obviously, because people are quitting. And, you know, like I said, if people have a problem with perceived corruption of some sort, there are avenues to, to, to have that stuff investigated. But just posting things on social media about our employees and supposed things that they're doing, that's, that's not right, and it should not be tolerated, it should not be done. And that's why I brought this up. But look, we are in a bad spot as a city right now. I think everybody knows it. They're looking at what's going on, and it's, it's, it's time we move forward from this stuff. It really is. We've got, we've got to, we've got to control what we're doing. And I didn't want to bring this up. So you're kidding me? That's the furthest thing I wanted to do? No. I want us to get along. I want us to actually govern this city. But like I said, our employees, the ones that make this city run, the ones that have brought this city to where it is today, executing on the policies, the direction of the city commission. We don't have employees out there, out in left field, just going rogue. I mean, they're executing on what the city commission has dictated as the policies. So those folks, they needed a voice. That's why I brought this up. But Commissioner Fessick, honestly, at this point in time, I, you know, I make a motion that we just table this. Is there a second?
Before, excuse me?
There's a, the motion has been moved to table. There's a second on the motion.
Excuse me?
Very, very good.
Sorry, this is my, excuse me?
Commissioner Fessick, I'm sorry, you're out of order. There's a motion to table on the floor. It's been seconded. There is no discussion on the motion table. Let's go ahead and call a roll.
I'm not going to call a roll until my attorney speaks.
Commissioner Fessick, you're out of order.
Okay.
Commissioner Fessick?
To table.
No.
Commissioner Perkins?
No.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
No.
Mayor Hart?
Yes. Very good. Motion fails. Very good. That, that ends the presentation, so we'll go ahead and open it up to public input. Thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir. You just name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Sure. My name is Michael Pizzi. My law office is 6625 Miami Lakes Drive, and I'm an attorney representing Commissioner Audrey Fessick. I think it's pretty outrageous of you to make the speech you made, and then after blasting her and humiliating her, immediately move to table the item so she doesn't get a chance to say anything. I have been a city attorney, I've been a mayor, I've been a commissioner. I've never seen a mayor or any public official blast somebody, give a half-hour speech humiliating them on live TV, and then immediately table the item so they don't even get a chance to respond or say their name. That's out, that's outrageous. That's anti-democratic. I'll be brief. Number one, this censure resolution is an outrageous abuse of authority. What gives you, Mr. Mayor, or this commission, the authority or the right from up above to regulate the private speech of Commissioner Fessick or anybody else on a social media, their private social media account? Whether it's President Trump, whether it's Donald Trump, Commissioner Fessick, Laura Luma, Sean Hannity, Laura Ingraham, or, or anybody else. They have a right to express their First Amendment opinion on social media in their private accounts. This is directed toward, and I heard your comment earlier. You said, "Tolerate." How dare any public official in any city discuss whether or not the mayor and commission are going to tolerate allowing people to go on blogs and social media accounts and express their opinion? They have an absolute right to do it under the First Amendment. Let me say this. The censure resolution violates the U.S. and Florida Constitution. It's illegal under the city charter because it's an abuse of your authority, and it constitutes slander per se, because as you said, it's outside the scope of your duties. the scope of your duties. By proceeding with this and putting it on the agenda, and by asking people to vote for this, you are subjecting yourself and the city as a whole to liability under 4042 USC Section 1983 for violating her First Amendment rights, and the First Amendment rights of every other citizen who thinks they have a right to send messages and go on blogs and give comments. And you're also committing common law slander because this resolution accuses her of all sorts of things, inciting violence that are not true and have never happened. It's slander per se that's outside the scope of your duty. So if you proceed with this, the city can be sued for First Amendment violations in federal court and for slandering and slandering her good name. Finally, the city charter, the city has no authority to regulate or comment on or obstruct the private social media accounts of Audrey Fezick or anybody sitting in this room. If she wants to go on a blog or go on YouTube and voice her opinion, she has a right to do it.
Thank you, sir.
That's my attorney. He will speak for me. Thank you. That's my attorney. He will speak for me. Thank you.
We have 30 seconds to finish?
Thank you, sir.
After that speech? Okay.
Thank you.
I urge you to vote against this. It's an outrageous abuse of authority, and it's front-to-back illegal. And thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, Mr. Berman?
Just to correct the record, if I may?
Sure.
There's never been any suggestion, and I think the mayor made it quite clear, that there's no attempt to regulate private speech or any accounts. This is not a censoring situation. The commissioner is free to express her opinion, whatever that opinion is, whether it's agreeable to others or not. The issue is utilizing city employees to register that opinion. That's the only issue you've indicated. You've requested that stopped. That's in violation of the city's charter provision. And with regard to not having a right, every body, every body that sits has the right to censure its own members. It doesn't have to be included in the charter. So, Mr. Pizzi, I've argued against him before. I'll continue to argue against him on this point, but.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Berman. Next speaker?
Can you bring up the first couple of slides, those emails, again, please?
We've already seen them. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, my question is really simple because I feel like the issue is about a perceived tone behind them, because I didn't really see anything in particular that wasn't actually true, right? This person is this person. That person is on this committee. This person is an employee. And I'm not picking anybody out in particular, but like, for example, when you put out the agenda, you tell me the staffer's name. That's how I know. And one of the struggles that I have as a resident is when I am watching these proceedings go on, and perhaps Ms. Dolan, perhaps Ms. Civil, whoever is representing the item, they seem to take it so to heart that when some commissioners question them, they get all tense and they back, and it turns into this thing that it really ought not to be. And so then, when a commissioner puts out there in public, you know, things that maybe I didn't know, if it seems like innuendo, I guess that's a thing, but if it's information, I'm not sure why it's censured. So, the information that might not be correct as per one of the letters, I think, from Bremel, I can't speak to that. But I didn't see anything in the list that looked to be particularly accusatory. It looked more like information, and people could infer from that information what they want. Personally, you know, like, I do my business differently, but I think her constituents hired her to do business this way, to be confrontational. And it might be abrasive. Maybe you don't like it. That's okay. She's going to be up for election. Somebody will decide, you know, the voters will decide how they feel about it. But this all feels a little theatrical and over the top. I don't really feel like, I mean, maybe an employee feels bad about it, but you also work in a public setting. Your name is on public documents. I think you need to, like, you know, hike them up and expect a certain amount of that. I work in a public setting. I see my name. There are students who say terrible things about me and students who say lovely things about me. They're not always true. They're mostly untrue, and usually the people who are unhappy with me are people who didn't do what they should have been doing, or, you know, people who are just connected to the wrong thing. So, I feel like this is a little overblown.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Berman?
I just wanted, and again, I'm not arguing for censure, against censure. It doesn't matter. I just want to point out that in response to the last speaker, that one of the responses to one of the posts was two bullets in the head and being dumped in the river was the way these matters are dealt with in other cities. That response caused city employees, and this is within a week of Charlie Kirk's murder over assassination. I mean, it just causes their hearing these things. They went to, they were concerned for themselves. And if anything, if all this does today is increase awareness of how this can affect everyone, I just wanted to read from the actual resolution.
Thank you.
One sentence. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Wayne Oaken, Palmare. I have several groups and pages. They're not just managed by me. I do try to have a tone within all the groups and pages that is not hostile. I don't get political in the groups at all. I think everybody knows that. I don't think you'll find anything from me that basically slanders anyone. I am often confronted about certain things I may do, and I'll say, "Hey, send me a message," and I'll speak with the other moderators and come to a decision. But you're censoring your commissioner, and you're saying you're not, but you are. You don't want her to be transparent. She has to be transparent. That's what she was hired for. Other districts may even contribute to her, people in other districts, because she's doing an outstanding job, my opinion. By the way, I always thought you were a wonderful mayor, but you're changing. And I think you can learn from it. I think you can do better. I know you personally can. This whole event is despicable. I have seen online parroting by people, repeating and repeating attacks against Commissioner Fezick. It's outrageous. It's hostile. It endangers her. As far as the city employees are concerned, by the way, they work for government. They're open, they're open like anybody else, any civilian. They're not protected. They want to get a lawyer, get a lawyer. They want to speak to somebody in personnel, do so. You want to have a conversation, backdoor conversation, "Hey, can we not, like, do this?" Fine. But, I'm sorry. And if they want to quit, bye. We don't need them. I've been attacked many times. People are welcome to do so. You're censoring, and that's dangerous. And thank you, Commissioner Fezick, for being so transparent. I have seen nothing hostile. If I did, I would have told you immediately. Thank you.
Very good. Next speaker?
Just name and address to the record.
Mark in Tragola, 1401 South Ocean Boulevard. If my voice is a little fluttery, you can save money, raise the temperature in here. I am not in favor of censoring Commissioner Fezick. But then again, I'm a taxpaying citizen of Pompano Beach without any financial interest in the cash cow that is feeding the lawyers, consultants, and contractors who do not want their activities to be exposed to the light of day. Once Commissioner Fezick exposed embarrassing behavior from the public record, the bureaucracy jumped into protective action. Even a one-sided news article in our local newspaper that called this "The Censure of Commissioner Fezick." It never said it hasn't been voted on yet. She hasn't yet been censured. And yet, the shills on social media jump into action in order to impugn her character. She missed two meetings. She's being censured. She nearly caused a huge problem with the CRA budget, yet not a single claim that what was pointed out from public records is untrue. They are now gearing up to unseat her in her reelection because they want somebody here that will rubber stamp whatever they want instead of asking questions. My unsolicited advice to Commissioner Fezick, regardless of how this vote goes, is to keep up the good fight, do what's right for Pompano Beach, but take a page out of the playbook that the bureaucracy plays by. Give the information to somebody else to post, because that's what they do. Thank you.
Very good. Next speaker?
Skavarsky, 1630 Southwest Fifth Avenue. If we make it a little bit warmer in here, we will save the taxpayers money. I mean, raise it a couple of degrees. It's freezing in here. Freezing. Okay, the only thing I have to say is, I'm going to use something that happened to me several years ago. You and I remember Ross Schulmeister. I saw him briefly before he passed away, and he made a comment to me. He said, "You are the only," you know that Ross had the newspaper, and he would write a bunch of baloney, crazy stuff in these newspapers. Most of it lies. And he said to me, the last time I saw him in a meeting, he says, "You know, you are the only person that's ever run for office that I would say stuff about nonstop in my paper, and you didn't care." And I looked at him. He was much smaller than me. And I said, "You know what? Actually, I did because some people believed it." And he looked at me and goes, "That was the whole idea." You want to know something? It didn't faze me. If you don't like what people are writing about you, too bad. I would prefer it to be the truth. I don't go on Facebook or Instagram or this other junk that they all play games on. I've got better things to do in my life. Obviously, other people like to go on it. But if facts are being stated, as long as they're factual, that's just too bad. That's my opinion. And I don't think too many people are going to disagree. Threatening people is probably not a good idea, but, and what we have going on in politics outside of Pompano Beach, especially nationally, some of the stuff that's being said is beyond sickening. So, I think probably what she's writing is probably pretty tame or liberal compared to some of the other junk we're hearing out there. But, like I said, if it's factual, there shouldn't be a problem.
Very good. Next speaker?
Come on down.
Yeah, I'm coming. Quentin Tompkins, 436 North 19th Street, Pompano Beach, Florida. Mayor, I'm here to say this. Everybody have to give account of what they do, including you. Let's go back to you made a media concern in the time that they voted against something. You made a social media yourself. You got on it and posted it. Who came to you? You should have been brought before because you are an example. You are their leaders. You made a post, and you called names. Those same city workers that was out there could have took that the wrong way, and that could have been a disaster. Did you ever think about that? The same thing that you feel about what she did, two wrongs don't make a right. So, what needs to happen? You all need to know how to come together, reason together, and leave the social media out because it's causing a problem. And until you all know how to get together, it's not the city. It's you all that's making the city look like it is. It's not the people. It's you. Because you made this big old thing. You took all this long time, put that on there, but not one time when you made that, nobody never put that up. Why was that posted up there in the commission meeting where everybody could have saw that? What happened to that? Did you apologize? Did you come to the people to say anything? We don't know what you, we don't know whether you went to Mrs. Perkins, apologized to her, what? But it should have been openly, just like you put it out there in the opening. It should have came before the public openly. Two wrongs don't make a right. You had no business doing what you do, just like you said she had no business. You had no business doing that because her life could have been at stake. We living in a cruel time where people does not have a sound mind. The same way you feel about them employees, that's the same way her family members, her friends, and other people feel about her. Thank you.
Very good. Further input from the public?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. How are you? My name is Lamar Fisher. I am a current Broward County Commissioner and also a resident of Pompano Beach. I'm here to respond to Commissioner Fezick's false statements, accusations, and personal attacks on myself and my family as it relates to your social media posts. First, I have never disrespected you in any way, shape, or form. In fact, I made sure to always greet you with kindness and courtesy. So, when my reputation, integrity, my name is attacked, I must protect such the greatest degree of my family. Just to let you know, my professional career, if you do not know, I'm a real estate broker and owner of Fisher Auction Company, specializing in real estate brokerage services, real estate auctions, real estate investments across the United States, one of the nation's top real estate auction marketing firms. As far as our property acquisitions, Commissioner, again, this is my profession. August 22nd of 2012, I purchased my professional office building at 2112 East Lane Boulevard, Pompano Beach, along with a vacant lot on South Federal Highway for my parking for my customers. I own 100% and operate my business from there. December 2013, I purchased 23 Southeast 22nd Avenue, currently as the CrossFit Business, with the total of three partners. Sold to the CRA in 2020, not an elected Pompano Beach official in 2020. On October 29, 2014, purchased the 110 South Federal Highway property, currently a flower shop, with three other partners. Sold the CRA in 2020, not elected a Pompano Beach official in 2020. 2018, I purchased 18 South Federal Highway, currently contrast furniture with two other partners. And of course, in 2018, purchased three vacant lots on Southeast 22nd Avenue with one other partner. Sold the CRA in 2020, not elected Pompano Beach official in 2020. Special note, all purchases included debt service to either lending institution or private lending that needed satisfied at the time of closing, so I didn't make all this money you're talking about. Legal opinions, very important. Requested from the state, Florida's Ethics Commission, relating to any conflict voting as the mayor of Pompano Beach and the chair of the CRA board for voting for the east transoading corridor, including the land use amendments and changes of the city zoning code within the CRA. Letter received dated January 10, 2018, from C. Christopher Anderson III. General Counsel, Deputy Executive Director stated there's no voting conflict under section 112.3143, section 3 little a of Florida statutes. Even obtaining the Ethics Commission letter, an ethics complaint was filed. Going through the process, on October 27, 2021, the Assets Commission found no probable cause, and complaint was dismissed. The CRA approached my partners to sell the properties behind me. They used the CRA appraisals, not even to obtain their own appraisals. Sold less than what we could have received on the private market, but the long-term play was to continue to acquire and ultimately develop the entire site behind me. It was voted out by my partners. Mayor, this is important because my name was up on there several times.
Please go ahead.
And I was flattered, as you know, that I pulled the strings of the city, although I've been out of City Hall for the past eight years. There's no conflict. Actually, when I was mayor, Commissioner, me and my family were threatened by social media activity that my house is going to be set on fire with my family inside of it. So, now my family feels the exact way, as the vice mayor said earlier when she had her post. She said, talked about her family and her children were in fear. That is exactly right. So, I can't be attacked like anybody else, Mayor. I feel I've been attacked. Now I have to worry about my children. Now I have to worry about my children and my grandchildren now. So I just wanted to put on the record that with Postkin and Mr. Kirk's death, that this is a serious matter. Again, attack me all you want to, but please leave my children and grandchildren alone. God bless you.
Very good. Next speaker?
My name is Pam Saworka, 101 Briny, and I am a resident of District One. And I just want to say that we really appreciate everything Audrey says. Very seldom, if ever, have I found her not to be transparent and to state the facts, and I have not found them to be not true. The other thing I would like to add is that you have said this is because of the employees. I am an HR professional. I am retired now. And you said that the employees did go to HR, and HR couldn't help them. If everything that you're saying is true, and they're that upset, and so I can't think of the right... They're afraid for their own safety and stuff. As an HR professional, we would have taken charge of that, and they wouldn't... We would have looked into it and would have found some reason to either talk to Audrey or do something. And I guess that's where it bothers me, that you're saying HR did nothing for them. That's all.
Very good.
Thank you, Audrey.
Next speaker? Anyone? Very, very good. Public input closed. Commission discussion. Very good. Commissioner Segerson?
Yeah, I mean, a censure... Not a censor, but a censure. And it's done at the congressional level from time to time. And it sort of points out from someone's colleagues that they think their behavior is sort of beneath the standard of the body. And it's in a trial, obviously. And frankly, I'm not going to get in any debate or argument about what was said because, I mean, I can... I don't care. I'm not going to argue it. That's for other people to do. That's for the OIG and the Division of Ethics. Maybe it'll happen in a civil lawsuit, but for me, I'm not interested in hearing about what you, Commissioner Fessick, think I think about your actions. Okay? So I can only base my words on my observations and the opinions I've formed through those observations. So it's simply my opinion. And again, not a trial. We're not talking about... It's not for me to judge whether it's misfeasance, malfeasance, nonfeasance, but it certainly sounds like bad conduct. It is through implication, you have put employees at fear. You have... It seems to me...
Excuse me. Commissioner...
I would be in fear with some of the comments...
Commissioner...
Yeah, please, Mayor.
Mr. Tompkins? If you have comments... Mr. Tompkins? If you... Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, I don't care who it was. Just please be quiet.
Mr. Tompkins, if you have comments, could you take it out in the lobby? I'm just going to ask you, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I just said it was Mr. Tompkins, and he just kept saying it was. You keep calling out names.
That's correct because I was watching.
Yeah, I was too.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Commissioner Segerson.
So it is... This is a very, very serious matter because our employees come here and many work for many, many years. Many of our top-level employees could make twice as much money in the private sector. Why do they stay here? They stay because they've become part of a family. They stay because they are proud of what they do. They stay because they feel the city is moving in a great direction, and they're proud of what we, as a body, have achieved. And to... It's just so upsetting when I hear people are quitting. Some of our best people, some are starting to retire because nobody wants to be subjected to such stringent criticism or by implication that they're corrupt or taking money, making all of these very serious accusations without proof. Now, if I was a business, I would say you're very close to tortious interference with business by how you characterize some of the ethical standards of some of our consultants. You, you know, weren't, like I said, it seems to me that it's like sabotage. You... It seems to me that by sabotaging cities' employees, city employees' reputations, you're sabotaging projects like McNabb. We know that's a big issue. And you may think it's funny, Commissioner Fessick, with your laughter, I take this very serious. And I don't like sitting up here. This is not fun. But I do... Do I think that your behavior is... It doesn't... Is not dignified? Do I think it sinks way below the office you hold? Yes. Yes, I do because of your actions and the way you've characterized city staff. And I take that very seriously. And it seems to me, and at every turn of event, if you can't control it, you want to tear it down. You're sabotaging, you're a saboteur, and I'm sure it's going to continue, and that's your prerogative. You have a right to say whatever you want, but, you know, words do have consequences, I think. And, you know, it's not for me to say, but I think you've done a disservice to the city and to our employees, and I wish you would stop it. And that's what a censure would say, is that I don't really like your actions. If you think these are all true, then go to the law enforcement. But you've said things that you don't have any facts to back up. You've implicated... But you know what? The other thing is, for sure, I don't care what your retort is. You can say what you want, but I'm not going to engage in any back and forth with you regarding your actions because you do what you do, and I do what I do. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Further commission discussion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I too hate where we're sitting today. I have a different perspective. I put this situation squarely on the shoulders of two men that sit up here most of the time, although one of them isn't here very often. So there is an absolute lack of leadership in this city, and it is so apparent to us sitting up here and to the residents of this city. So, Mayor, you can say what you want about getting along, and you can act like it pains you to do this, but that's not what people are seeing, and that's not the reality that you are posting online and that you are living. You are out there outwardly campaigning and posting another... Her opponent's name, saying, "Can't wait to work with someone else." So you can't sit here out of one-sided mouth and say you want to get along and work together while you're out there doing that, and you're stoking the division, and you are creating this void of leadership here in the city. You're right, you went online and called our names a bunch of times. I get it, we're public officials, you can do whatever you want, but someone said it right. What you ended up doing at that moment was because it was related to the general employees' contract, you weaponized the city employees against us. You... We were told videos playing of these three commissioners, and you're not going to get your Christmas bonus because of them, because they have questions. So you are the manipulator of this system then. You weaponized them for your advantage today. You want to be the hero for the city employees. But I think a lot of us see right through that and the lack of leadership because you talk out of both sides of your mouth. The other person who I'd like to speak to today is never here, and sorry, I think maybe there's maybe a family situation, and I feel bad, but it is a constant pattern that we have an absent city manager. So the city manager reports to us, and when it comes down to it, this is 100% his responsibility. The employees need to go to him, and he needs the answer to us. And it's not working for anybody. He's not working for us. He's not getting answers to our questions. He is absent. There is a double standard up here. And then I hear it, I feel for the employees, but they go to him, and he clearly can't solve their problems either because he's got a culture in this organization and here that is not working. There is an absolute lack of leadership from our city manager also because someone pointed this out, that people who work for the city at times come off as too personally invested in a project. And that is not... People see it and hear it. You can't fight for a project when you work for the city. You give the facts, and then we make the decisions. I worked for Boeing back when we were working the 737 MAX, and I can tell you, when people lose perspective and are emotionally invested in a project, it doesn't go well. So our city manager has a... Who's never here, to be honest, is setting the tone in the city, and he is not doing his job for half of us up here, and it's not working in the city. So I feel bad for the employees. I do. I feel bad that they're being manipulated depending on the mood that the mayor's in, and I feel bad that people have to go online and see their name. I feel bad for all of us because it's... We have personal lives, and we have families that we love and we care about, and no one wants to see any of this. I mean, Paul, you're my neighbor. Like, we wave hi to each other in the morning. I don't want your... I want the best for you. We don't control people's behaviors, unfortunately, and we live in this world now that it is... Not the world that I would pick to live in or raise kids in, but it's where we're at right now. So I guess all I can say is that it's incumbent on each of us to try to do a little better each day, and not just to say we're going to do better, and not just to say it pains us to sit here and do this, but to actually walk the walk and maybe slightly change some of your behaviors to actually show it. But when it comes down to it, for me, this is... Freedom of speech is a personal page, and you said it over and over, Mayor, "Personal page, personal page, personal page, personal page." I mean, I would not choose to do the same things necessarily, but I... You have the right to type whatever you want into whatever app you're on your phone. Thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion. Commissioner Smith?
This is all about putting employee names and statements that are false, are leading. It's just about the employees. That's all that it's about. And Commissioner Fessick, all this is asking is if you would stop mentioning employees' names in your post, and if you would remove those posts that were shown up there. I've seen some of them. I don't know what all of them are, but I know we have to keep them for public records. But all this is asking is to stop mentioning employees' names, to remove the posts that they're talking about, retain them for public record. That's all this is. This isn't saying you can't talk anymore, you can't post anymore, just not to use the employees. And that's all I think that Mayor Harden was asking, and that's all... And I voted to have this discussion tonight. That's all that I'm asking because nobody wants to go through that, and it's hard. You get a name out on social media, and you Google that name, and it pops up the bad stuff. So if you can just stop and remove it, that's all that we're asking. We're not wanting to take away your freedom of speech at all. That's not at all what we're asking to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Further commission discussion.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Commissioner, welcome. I've been in your seat before on this dais. I remember when they all came against me, and that back row back there were full of Fort Lauderdale police. Boy, they... I'm going to tell you, they had me set up too. I mean, I was just set up by these same people that are against you, of course. And it's so sad that our city is in the predicament it's in, and then we have these pastors that pray with some of our elected officials on a regular basis, and I don't know what type of Holy Bible they live by to do the things that they're doing. But I heard the mayor say the employees have been put through the wringer. And I know about that. I know about the wringer because let me use some examples about my wringer. There have been times when I would call BSO. "Can you go over there and please have them turn that music down?" Every time I called them, they would walk over there and say, "Well, Commissioner Perkins said turn the music down." Because they wanted them to come after Commissioner Perkins. They know where Commissioner Perkins live. So let's talk about the time when I mentioned about the employee that put the monkeys on the internet. And I tell you, I found out who it was. I don't know whether anything ever happened to that employee, but they were talking about purchasing, giving away free trees in Pompano, and this particular employee decided to put all these monkeys on TV grabbing trees or grabbing something, which was very insulting. Let me tell you about my office. So on the fourth floor, a particular person comes in my office... They don't know I could see them. Comes in my office, and they rearrange everything in my office. So I'm thinking, maybe they want to be an interior decorator. I don't know. But they move things. Come back, and they'll put a pin like on the front, or they'll turn my computer off, or they're just doing something weird in my office. That's going through the wringer. Let's talk about these two employees. There are two employees in this city that I know of. One employee just keeps bashing me on social media. He still works for the city. And what am I supposed to do? Go to Human Resources? He's bashing my name, telling me to stop. The second employee was doing it to the guys, telling guys certain things about me on the job and trying to turn everybody on the job against Beverly. I don't even know the guy. I mean, I know him now. I know his name. Nothing happened to him. He was fine. So I guess they can take jabs at commissioners, but we can't take jabs at them. Now, when you talk about family, that's very interesting because we love our family and we want to protect our family. We really do. And I remember the time when I had all the news stations in front of my house, Channel Four, Channel Ten, Channel Seven, and I was not at home. So these same people that are after me sent them to my mom's house, my 90-some-year-old mother, and they walked right into her house, the news media. And she had no idea what's going on when you're talking about protecting your family. I remember when E. Pat Larkins was sitting up here in... I can't think of the guy named that... What was the guy named that ran over the Ledger?
Ed Foley?
Yeah, Foley. Every week, he had something in that newspaper negative about Pat Larkins. Every week. Every week. So when you talk about people coming against you, I'm one that sit here on this dais, and I've said many times, there's a disconnect with staff and the community. And I say that for a reason. There's still a disconnect. We're not even trying to connect. Now, Commissioner Eden, Mayor Harden, and Commissioner Smith, I disagree with you all on quite a few things, but there is no way I would sit up here and vote against you on something like this. something like this, even though I've disagreed on a lot of things. This is just something, in my opinion, colleagues don't do to each other. I disagree with a lot of you on this dais, but there are some things I just couldn't do because I do have a heart and I do have a soul. And if I did some of the things to you that you've done to me, you couldn't handle it. You couldn't handle it. So I don't think this, this is all about, this whole setup here is all about public shaming. It's all about damaging somebody's reputation. It's just all about diminishing your influence. That's what it sounds like to me. I've been there. They were so organized when they came to Beverly Perkins sitting up here. They were hammering. But you have to understand what your job is. Your job is to speak for the people, listen to the people and try to get things done in this city. That's our purpose. All that other stuff is really not necessary. We've taken up all this time on Fessick when, oh, I was reading that you have a background in marketing, so maybe that's part of why you do what you do. But I don't know what it's going to take for us to get to the point up here on this dais that we're all, we all love Pompano for sure. We know that for sure. We all agree on that. But some of the things that we do is just not necessary. It wasn't necessary to put this on the agenda. And I've said to the city manager and probably the assistant city managers, just sit down and have a talk with Commissioner, Vice Mayor Fournier. Sit down and have a talk with, you know, just talk because we're lacking and we're missing communication sitting up here. But I am never, ever, ever going to put any of you commissioners on the spot. I don't care how I look at it, you're still my colleagues. But some things you just don't do. Public shaming is damaging someone's reputation? No. No. We don't need to do that. So I've been through the wringer in this, in this city. I've been through the wringer, but I'm still born and raised here and I'll be here to the rest of my life, so I'm not going anywhere. So, but Mayor, I just think we need to stop the little petty stuff like you're putting this on the agenda and let's try to communicate a little bit more. Let's try. But sometime the way we do things on this dais, it makes me think that there's a little bit of hate going on and no one wants to get to that point. I know I would never. There's no one sitting up here I could ever hate. I'm not going to hell for that, hating anybody. But for staff, ah, I feel like you already have issues with this commissioner anyway. So some of it I read, some of it I don't read, but it's just, this is not called for. And if I took everything personal that happened to me, I would really be in bad shape today. So I can't take it personal. So I just, like I said, I would never support this for any colleague sitting up here on this dais. I would not. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Commissioner Perkins referenced some things that I did to her and I have no idea what you're talking about. Some horrible things that I did to you. Can you, I don't know what you're talking about, but I've never done anything, just for the record, I've never harmed you. What are you talking about that I, horrible things that I did? All right, all right.
We can go back and forth, but be careful if you're playing. I don't know what she's talking about.
That I did, that's what you said, so.
Let me reiterate what I said.
Commissioner Perkins, go ahead.
Let me reiterate what I said. I said, there is no one sitting here on this dais that I would ever do public shaming to in any kind of way, the censure. I couldn't do that to anybody sitting on this dais. I didn't point you out to say you've directly done anything to me. I'm just saying I couldn't do this to you or any of my other colleagues sitting up here on the dais. That's what I said.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further commission discussion? Very good. Commissioner Fessick?
I would like to, again, have my attorney speak and he doesn't need three minutes because I believe that this agreed, this did not belong on the agenda and it was brought about to the agenda by you purposely, and I believe with some bias, not allowing me to participate so you could get the vote, rock the vote. I was ready, willing, and able. And this body, I want to kind of go back, I'm going to take everybody back to how we got here, for me having, being out of the meetings. And this body has a documented history of allowing remote participation for other commissioners, including Commissioner Eaton in 2024, with no vote required, no personal discussion. Yet my identical request was denied twice accompanied by public commentary about my personal life and many, many, many false statements about me made in my absence. This is a clear example of selective enforcement that our city manager and executive staff, I suppose, it's just, and political retaliation. I've previously submitted a formal memo that everybody seemed to ignore completely and the refusal to not allow me to participate in those two meetings to the point where at the end of that meeting, you decided to bring this forth only refuse, only just reinforces the bias that is in play here. It's disgusting. I, it's to all of the accusations that are completely, in my, in my, in my mind, completely unfounded. I'm not sure what you're referring to when there's all of this in an agenda and there was all of it in an eight-minute speech or whatever about something or other. You are, just tread carefully on the things that you say in public that you don't know. You don't know. You're saying that there's, there's false statements. You don't know that. I would ask you, what do you think is false? Want to play those games? I don't play those games. I'm not going back and forth. You are out of line. You are out of line to not let me participate and you are out of line with your behavior. And while we're talking about bias, I know that there's certain procedures here and so I'd like to defer to my attorney because I believe he will do the best for me to help me understand exactly what the bias or how to explain the bias best to you. But the power play is not going to happen. It's not going to be a hat trick today. That's uncalled for. Not a hat trick. You're calling for my censure and everything that I, everything that I said was from a public records request, so, and then my opinion. So being that the public records request was released, that information is public record and my opinion is mine, as it will always be, and you are welcome to yours. I have, I gave, I gave my attorney the folder with the dates, so I cannot remember them offhand, but I do, I did prepare a, very, very end, yeah, that's a memorandum thing at the back. There were a bunch of dates that I, that I noted on your social media. And so, Mr. Berman, just before, so I just want to make sure that we're clear. Obviously, in somebody's censure, if somebody's being censured, you don't, you don't get a vote. Correct?
I don't vote. You get a vote.
I get a vote?
Yes.
Tell me I get a vote.
You get a vote.
Okay, well, because in everything I've read, generally you would recuse yourself if it's something to you, so.
The recusal would be if, if there's a conflict.
Just want to make sure.
An ethical conflict, an ethical conflict under Florida law is, deals with financial or pecuniary matters. You don't have a financial or pecuniary matter here. This is, you get, you get the right to vote on this issue.
Secondly, everything else I've read also says that when censure deals with freedom of speech, it would generally be quasi-judicial in nature and I didn't see that there here either.
We're not dealing with freedom of speech. We're dealing with.
Yes, we are.
Who you're referring to.
We are dealing with.
When you make the speech. You're not being censored, you're being.
No, we are, but we are dealing.
Censured and request, there's a request. If you read the resolution, it only deals with mention of city employees.
It does more than that in the, in your, in your resolution. It does a lot more than that. It says a lot of things that I don't believe are true and I'm not sure where, what by, what, what basis you came up with this resolution. And I'm actually quite surprised how quickly you came up with it, given that the BSO stuff from September 9th, to just have not, people not approach our dais, didn't make it on this agenda, but yet this did.
It'll be on the next agenda.
Thank you. Okay, well then, if, if I have your blessing that I can vote for myself, then we will move forward and I, again, I want to make sure that I publicly state that this is absolute garbage, like raccoon dumpster, dumpster fire, dumpster fire garbage. And the things that you said about me while I was not in attendance, you have lost your ability to know what it is like to be a leader. I do not know what is wrong with the common sense that at least if you want to attack me, sure, do it, but do it while I'm here. Man up. Jeez, okay, let's vote.
Very good. Yeah, I just want to say that's, you know, there's some comments that were made and that's, that's fine, but I wanted to make sure this item was on an agenda so that it would have a proper airing in public like this, so that everybody had an opportunity to speak and defend themselves or not, whichever the case may be, on these, on these matters. That's why, as part of my motion, was to make sure that it would be on the next agenda that Commissioner Fessick was going to be in attendance. Very good. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and vote on the motion.
Mayor, I don't recall a motion being made to.
It was, no, it was moved, it was moved in second to.
At the beginning? Okay. Didn't catch that. Commissioner Fessick?
Absolutely not.
Commissioner Perkins?
No.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
With regards to employees, yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
No.
Mayor Harden?
Yes. Very good. Matter fails. Okay, that moves us up to additional audience to be heard. Do we have anyone still signed up? Mr. Alfred?
I have two, two forms here. First speaker, Brandy Zabadal, followed by Sherri Abrams.
Very good. Just name and address to the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Brandy Zabadal and I live in District 2. And actually, I've aptly been called by Commissioner Sigerson Eaton. Because I care so greatly about the three parks that are within my neighborhood, she did attend our meeting and did abruptly leave once I became president of the Pompano Beach Highlands. I did want to bring awareness that the three parks that sit inside of my neighborhood, the, the flags have been torn for quite some time and I'm sorry that you don't find it appropriate to drive through the neighborhood and see what's going on, but I do take quite care of the neighborhood that I live in and I am so grateful that the city manager did hear our cries in District 2 and has started to really pay attention to the things that are going on within our district, i.e. traffic lights not working, i.e. all kinds of things that are just not important. But I've noticed that since I've started bringing awareness and attention with my photographs that it's really gotten the attention that it deserves. So I proudly really love being called Little Miss Park Ranger because I do care about what's going on in my neighborhood, in my neighborhood that I'm now the president of. So, yeah, it is, thank you. You would have known that if you stayed for the meeting, but you, again, yeah. And with that being said, I am so excited that we have so many great initiatives pushing forward in my neighborhood and I did want to address a dais as I'm sure you've seen many of my plethora of emails because we have been since long forgotten in District 2. So with that, I am so excited to really tell everybody about all these beautiful things our medians have now been taking care of, the parks have been cleaned up and despite all of my efforts, I still get chastised in all of my meetings for caring about my community, my schools, my parks, and my neighborhood. So I really appreciate all of the love and care and now the flags do fly beautifully on my parks in my neighborhood. And I also wanted to let you know that I did receive your email at 3:00 in the morning about the pickleball courts pushing forward after you did attend our meetings and did tell us that we absolutely would not be getting a pickleball court or a dog park at North Pompano, I'm sorry, Pompano Beach Highlands, AKA Triangle Park, where 53 children regularly attend every single day so that they're not home by themselves. Elementary school children should not be home by themselves and I do greatly appreciate you really considering, instead of putting pickleball courts and a dog park where it would be an extreme liability, to consider expanding the rec, the rec room that our children attend and instead of it being a resource, it's now going to be stripped away from them. So it would make sense that maybe the people who, sorry, if it would make sense if the people who are the park and rec leaders also don't have to use the same bathrooms that are original in there, maybe we can expand the rec center instead of adding things that don't make sense. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Sherri Abrams.
Sherri?
Sherri Abrams. She's not here, Mayor. That concludes the audience to be heard.
That, that was it?
That concludes it, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, that takes us up to, let's see, next scheduled meetings, we've got October 20th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. There's a joint city CRA workshop. We've got October 28th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m., regular city commission meeting, followed by October 29th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m., joint city CRA special meeting, and November 13th, 2025 at 1:00 p.m., regular city commission meeting. Takes us up to reports. Mr. Donovan, any report?
Yes, Mayor, just two things. One, just a reminder that November 13th meeting is going to be on a Thursday because we have the Veterans Day off, so that will be a Thursday, just a reminder on that. And then finally, we do have a Clean Streets coming up on October 23rd and that'll be in the Collier City Esquire Lakes neighborhood. And that concludes my remarks.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Berman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the commission and everyone else, my office staff, I assume, and everyone responsible for this really nice surprise proclamation. Totally caught me off guard. Rarely am I at a loss for words. It's been a privilege again to work and still is with the commission in its various iterations, including now, over the 30-year period. The most, I guess, enjoyable part is looking out during that presentation at the faces of my coworkers and the people and the department heads and the employees, the great people I get to work with every day. That made this even more special, so I thank you for the ability to work with you, for your friendship, for your professionalism and camaraderie. So again, thank you to, that's what really makes this all special and probably why I'm still here, but, you know. And, and the only other question I had is, does this take the place of my annual review?
We'll talk.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Mayor, I would double check the 175,000 hours.
Yeah, I know.
I'd have DC double checked that or something.
Yes, thank, congratulations, Mark. Thank you for your service to the city. Seriously.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Very good. Mr. Alfred?
No report.
No report. Very good. Takes us up to city commission. Commissioner Fessick?
Thank you. I'll take a deep breath and do some fun things now. All right, so I had this little one. So I had a couple of questions just because I wanted to ask these questions while we're here. One, Mr. Berman, do you have any idea, do you know by any chance if, what is the, is, what is the authority of the mayor when it comes to signing CRA contracts?
He's one of the signatures on the CRA contract. I mean.
Okay. Would it come to CRA board or city manager and then, would the city manager would sign it if he, if he saw it, right?
Again, I would, first of all, I don't want to be evasive, but I think any CRA business or question regarding CRA, I would take to the CRA attorney and, but the mayor does sign on CRA contracts, as he does on city contracts. Some contracts go before, if they're under a certain limit, they don't go before the board. Depends on the contract.
So the reason why I ask and I'm, it's somewhere, but the reason why I ask and I don't feel comfortable bringing it to the CRA attorney is because there were only three signers on this particular contract, which happened to be the CRA attorney, the mayor, and city clerk for obvious reasons that he has to note, you know, note it, keep record of it. The dollar amount was just an hourly dollar amount, but it was.
The dollar amount was just an hourly dollar amount, but it was, the timing of when it was done was very interesting, and also it just basically extended our CRA attorney's contract for another three years at an hourly rate. But if you go into our checks and what we pay, it, it, it would be something that would need to come to the board. So, I'm just curious, that was why I, before I, you know, kind of went gangbusters into this on, on a CRA board meeting, I wanted to find out if there were certain rules that that were set in place as per CRA that would have to come to us.
If you would like to show me the contract, meet with me, I'm happy to meet with you anytime, as always, go over it, discuss it, and we can go over the particulars, hopefully before the next CRA meeting. Certainly make myself available. I can't comment on a contract. I, you have it in front of you, I, I haven't seen that contract, and again, I'm not a signatory on that contract or reviewed it, so, but I'm happy to look at it and give you whatever advice you would, you would like on it, at your convenience.
I would, thank you. I appreciate that. I just, I, I felt that it was a little bit shocking to see the contract signed on April eighteenth, I believe, from Ms. McKenna, and the twenty-fourth of April, pretty much right around the same time, there was a lot of questions circling about what was going on there. And in the midst of all of our, in the midst of all of our downtown project discussions. So, I wanted clarification on that, and I'll, I'll get it with you later. Thank you. The next thing is, and I did have something fun, I am having a, in, in lieu of my direct District One meeting, I am having a get-together at Mirageo Italian Grill on Thursday from five to nine. Something fun, because I think we've all had enough insanity lately. I have some, some good friends of mine coming in from Nashville, they play downtown on Broadway, and they're going to come do an acoustic duo set and just play some mu, fun music down by the water, and hopefully we're going to, hope the weather holds and everybody can just have a good time and, and just get to know each other, and if you don't know each other already, so everybody is welcome. Doesn't matter which district you live in. Again, it's Mirageo Italian Grill. Darlene, I actually thought of you. I, I actually printed out a quote that I really liked. We might not have the same one. Actually, I should probably mention this. Next week, also October, Wednesday, October twenty-second, from eleven thirty to two, is Pompano Beach Rotary, Pompano Beach's Rotary Club, they're, they have their Pompanista Fashion Show. And lunch, it's at the Hills Row Club. There are still tickets available this week, but they're kind of closing that up pretty soon. And I wanted to welcome a couple of different district businesses. Pick Chocolate Cafe, which is at 2696 East Atlantic Boulevard, Pompano Furniture and Design at 2666 East Atlantic, which is right next to 26 Degrees, and then Scramblers Golf Club, which was a slow opener in July, but it's an indoor golf venue, and that's at 1300 North Federal Highway. So, if the weather's terrible, you can, you can go hit some golf balls, which I desperately need to practice myself. So, so the quote for you, Darlene, was, it was, it was in honor of this day, is never be afraid to raise your voice for honesty and truth and compassion against injustice and lying and greed. If people all over the world would do this, it would change the earth. That's from William Faulkner. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I only have two items. I wanted to let everybody know, it's official that you all know that we have community court at the Annie Weaver Facility, which we started or launched back in 2022, I think. So, the community court will be moved or relocated to the Epat Larkin Center because they need more space there. So, I don't know the date they will be moving. Do you know, Brian, the date they will be relocating? I think it'll be probably December or January, maybe?
Probably January.
January, okay. So, just to let everybody know that the community court will be relocating in January to the Epat Larkin Center, so that they will have more space there. The last statement I have is regarding the community meeting. I had scheduled a community meeting for tomorrow, the fifteenth, at the Epat Larkin Center, and it has been canceled, and we're rescheduling that meeting for Monday, October twenty-seventh, at the New Senior Activity Center, which is on Ninth Street. So, I will get the flyers ready and available to those that would like to attend the community meeting. It's basically a meeting about the resources that are available to us in Pompano that we're not taking advantage of, just to let people know what's available to you and for you in the city of Pompano Beach, so that you'll be more aware of that. So, just remember, that meeting is changed to October twenty-seventh, which is a Monday, and I will make sure I get the flyer out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I recently got an email from the resident at Heritage Station, and they have a situation that's been ongoing for a number of years, and I've had our chief, Fire Chief Pete McGinnis and code and the CRA, all, we've been working on it, and I just wanted to, to say something that we were under the impression that the management had fixed the problem, but according to this resident, they have not. So, I want the residents to know that I am, I am involved, always have been involved, also involving BSO and our deputies regarding the homeless problem there. So, I look forward to some progress, and I want to thank all of staff for all their help, but we've just got to go that last 10%, right, and get it done. So, another thing I want to say, thank you to our Public Works program, who really have had a tough job. Mr. McCon had a tough job with all the rain that we have been having and the maintenance and the frequency of the mowing in the, in, excuse me, in, in the swales, parks, et cetera. I know it's been a really tough job, but thank you for all you do. And yes, if you wouldn't mind not interrupting me, Ms. Abado, I did attend the Highlands Civic Association meeting last Monday, and I did make a short presentation but needed to leave, and I was not aware that Ms. Abado was going to become the president, but I want to congratulate you, and I also want to thank you for pointing out things that I may not see because I can't be everywhere at all times. And so, I do appreciate your help.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you. Alrighty. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
You know, I have something, something positive about tonight. I think it'd be great for the city of Pompano Beach to work with Broward County School Board and make the property across the street become affordable housing, workforce housing for people that work for the school system. I think that's a great project, and I look forward to seeing that moving ahead. I also, a concern that's been, this isn't a positive thing, but I guess it could be, concern I've had about the gun, open carry guns that we have in the state of Florida. I would like to suggest that we have an active shooter training for the commission, because we're sitting up here, and I wouldn't know what to do if something was to happen or if somebody came in with a, a long gun, and it scares me. So, I would like to, to ask staff to arrange for the commission to have some type of training, especially for those of us that have no idea how to respond to that, if that was to happen in, in our chambers.
Active training, active shooter training.
Active shooter training.
In case somebody came...
And it's a sad thing to talk about, then, state of where we are right now, but that's where we are right now. So, moving to positives. In, in District Five, the Starlight Jam sessions have resumed at the gazebo across the street from the Skolnick Center. The next one will be November first with the Joanna Holston Band. It's a really great opportunity with this good weather we have to bring a chair, bring a blanket, bring some friends, and just sing along, wiggle along, and have time with community. I know, I know, Anne, you've been to the events, and I just love to go out there and hear the music that we have under the stars. It's a great thing that we can do at the gazebo. Something about community. This Saturday is an important homecoming game for the Pompano Cowboys. And Commissioner Sigerson Eaton, they are playing the Eagles, which play in North Pompano Park, your district. So, I'm just throwing out a fun little wager.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
If you're willing to wager.
Betting is illegal.
Okay. Well, it has no money to do with it.
That's good.
I challenge you that whoever wins the game Saturday, the Cowboys or the Eagles, at the next meeting, the losing team has to wear the other team's, team shirts. So, you'd look really good in a Cowboys shirt.
All right. In good, good fun.
Bet on? Bet on?
Yes, that'll, that's on.
Great, great. All right, my closing comment, and I'm glad we didn't have the same ones, Audrey, but this comes from Jane Goodall, somebody special to everybody's heart that loves animals and nature. What you do makes a difference. You have to decide what kind of difference you want to make. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, just real quick, staff is working on an active training already, active shooter training, so if that's something any of the commissioners would like to participate in, either as a group or individually, just let us know.
Very, very good. All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have two things. I know we're all tired, so I'll try to be quick. The first one is, this is October, we all see everyone in pink shirts and pink everywhere, and that is a reminder to all the women out there, please, please, please get your annual screening for breast cancer, start at 40 years old, and do not skip a year. It's really simple, and it makes a difference. So, please, to all the women in your life, just go do it. And then, second, I, I need to talk about a really important project in my district. Like I said, I know we're tired, so I think I'm, the way I'm going to do this is, I'm going to, so, the, the Six Terrace Bridge, which has been, I mean, I remember Lamar and Rex when I moved here promising this bridge. It has been promised for, I don't know, 10, 15 years to the residents, and the city has made so much progress on this recently. So, we've worked really hard with the federal agencies. We had applied in August 2024, and finally, in July of 2025, we got approvals from the Department, from the Army Corps, so it's a big deal. Now, this approval expires in March 2026. I'm sure there's some process, I don't, to renew it, but, but really, the hope was always that we would try to get this bridge in before the McNabb Bridge. So, the city put it out to bid, and on September fourth, we did receive a bid, and the procurement had determined the bid was responsible and responsive, so it is, it is a bid that can be considered. So, I would like to, I, I think the residents deserve a hearing of this, and we deserve, this commission deserves a discussion of this, because it's a, it's an important topic, the timing, the costs, all of it. I mean, there's some view that the cost will be less in a couple of years or in a year. I don't know that I believe that. Nothing really goes down, but I think it's worth a conversation and not to have tonight. So, I'm going to make a motion to ask the city to put a resolution on our next commission agenda to approve the, the bid for the Six Terrace Bridge, and then we can have that whole discussion at that meeting.
Sure. Well, is it...
Making, I'm making a motion to put a resolution on our next commission meeting to approve the contract for the Six Terrace Bridge.
Second.
Sure. Is it, is it ready? I mean, does staff have it?
I, I know they have the contract, and they've negotiated and best in, high, they're best and final, and, and...
Okay.
That's where we're at. So, I, I think it's worth a discussion, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Is this to vote on it or for discussion?
It's a resolution to, to vote. I mean, but...
Not now, but then, yeah.
If it's not baked, it's like, well, okay, but sure.
So, I just think we, we, we need more conversation about it, given what's going on, and I think it's, the best way to do it isn't now, it's to just bring a resolution forward with that, and then we can talk about the contract.
Okay, sure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If she carries noms, sure.
Thank you very much. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Very good.
No quote. I'll, I'll get one, I'll get one next week.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, I just wanted to, Chief Elwood, I just want to ask you if it's possible for you to put together a, a flyer or some type of material to put out into the community, letting people know about the open gun carrying, so that residents are aware where you can and cannot have these weapons. Can you put like a flyer or something out? I mean, in my district, it has, it has to be a flyer, because, you know, of course, we don't read the online city website, but some type of flyer to say, these are the places where you can carry your gun openly, and these are the places where you cannot, so that they will understand the do's and don'ts.
Yes, we can create that.
Okay, great. And let me know when you put that together, because we're going to need quite a few flyers.
I'll present it to the city manager, and then he can disperse it.
Great. That'd be wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, very good. As far as the bet between District Five and District Two, I've got, I've got to root for both of them, sorry. So, but good luck to all the teams. This meeting's adjourned.